Not working, huh? Hello? 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 Have a what? No. Oh, is that... Is the mic working now? Can you hear that? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the December 4, 2017 Meeting of the Millbury Planning Commission. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
......................................................
Okay, if we had the roll call, please.
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe?
President.
Chair Davis? Oh, Vice Chair Davis, sorry. And Chair Walker?
President.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any items on the agenda that the Commissioners want to review?
Hello, is this working? Yes. Time for the Agenda Review by Commissioners. Anybody want to review? Okay, next is the minutes. We have draft minutes for our November 20, 2017 meeting. Any comments or motion? Commissioner Quigg.
Yes, I'd like to make a correction to the minutes of our last meeting. If we can look at page three of four where we discussed the parking spaces and the applications that needed a third parking space. This actually is only addressing one of the items. However, this is applicable to all of the projects that evening. So I would like to make that correction and amend the minutes as said. I understand that staff has been working with all of the projects to ensure that they are all in order.
Any other comments? Commissioner Feng?
On item number C on page two of the meeting minutes for Helen Drive, 1009. I understand we had that during the discussion. Mr. Merker mentioned that the windows that is going to be used will be wood windows with aluminum cladding on the exterior. I know that we did not discuss during the approval on the vote to put a condition on it, but he did mention that he was going to use that material. So I just want to make sure that the meeting notes reflects that.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Commissioner Quigg?
How do I do this thing? Oh, there it is. With those two comments, I would approve, make a motion to approve the minutes with the comments from Commissioner Feng and myself.
Andy, we have a second. There's the second. Your votes, please. And the minutes pass four votes with Commissioner Joe abstaining. Okay, next is public communications portion of the meeting. At this point, if anyone has some comments on areas within the scope of the Planning Commission but not otherwise on the agenda this evening and would like to speak on those, please approach your podium. Okay, none. Next, we have old business, none. Public hearings. We have a public hearing on the gateway at the Millbury Station to consider the applications of Republic Millbury LLC for 16.9 acre site located north of the Millbury Avenue, east of the rail lines on the Millbury Park site, and south of the High Line Canal and the Bay Shore Manor neighborhood. And to make recommendations to City Council for the following applications. There's four application areas. Can we have the staff or the... Yeah.
No. No, it's not.
It's not working.
Good evening. My name is Colette Manier. I'm a consultant to the city assisting them in processing this application. The public item before you has been considered by the commission at their previous meeting on October 16th. And at that time, the... Oh, that's not the 26th, it was the 16th. Problem doing everything at the last minute. You received presentations both from city staff and the city's consultants as well as the applicant. You conducted a public hearing, and then you continued the meeting to tonight to allow for response to questions and issues and to allow the discussions on the development agreement to continue. There's a staff report that's been prepared for night, for tonight, which addressed some of the issues that came up for discussion that night, which included the fiscal impact analysis, which was not included in the meeting agenda packet for the October 16th but is now in the packet tonight. The original submittal from June 16th, the letter and peer review by Strategic Economics, the response by Gruen and Gruen, who are the applicant's consultants, and then an updated report dated June 2017. The changes really are only to update the budget numbers to a contemporary budget and adjust by cost of living. There was really no additional analysis that was provided. There was concern about the use of, or making sure that we have second means of access using South Station Road, and that's addressed in the staff report. There was concern that the mix of land use has changed and increased the amount of trips going through the Rollins-Millbury intersection. That's addressed in the staff report as well. Concern about the number of shuttle stops, the impact of the loss of about more than 500 parking spaces at BART as well as the shortfall in some of the portions of the project to meet the minimum parking standards. That's addressed in the staff report. The transportation demand management is provided. There was concern about bicycle and pedestrian routes, affordable housing, and the recreational amenities being provided by the project. I'm only going to talk about two of those, and one is to go over the issue of bicycle access and pedestrian access within the site. There's a graphic included in your staff report, which is from the applicant's submittal, page... I think it's page six in their application. This graphic that I have up here shows, the red lines are the new pedestrian connections that will be provided. And then along East Station, or along Garden Lane as well as along Rollins, there'll be bike lanes that will be provided, and also coming up from the south along Station Road. This fits with both the pedestrian circulation. This is the graphic from the adopted specific plan showing the preferred or the desired pedestrian connections as well as the connections for bicycles. So again, that was an area that was, there was some public input and wanted people to be able to see that the project does respond to those and provide those. And lastly, because we had not gone over this previously, I'd just like to go over the development agreement at a very high level, a very conceptual level. The development agreement is a voluntary agreement between the city and the developer, and both parties need to receive benefits. The developer in the development agreement is receiving variations in development intensity. That includes both exceeding the allowed density for the market rate and the senior housing, or the affordable housing, as well as not meeting the minimum standard for the hotel site. Some relaxations of development standards for Building 6A, which is the affordable building, affordable building, which include that it will be permitted to have residential use with no other required use. The specific plan requires that residential use is only be permitted in a mixed building, and we're setting that requirement aside. Additionally, the height of the building in terms of the street wall, not the absolute height, but the height of the facade at the street, will be permitted to exceed the limit of 55 feet and go to 65. Another significant benefit of the development agreement for the developer is that the project approvals will be valid for at least 10 years. Many of the project approvals would have a much shorter time period in which they would have to be acted upon absent the development agreement. Development agreement also provides that the project gets to go forward under the city's development policies that are in place at the time the development agreement is approved, so that if there are changes as we go along, they have certainty of being able to proceed under the existing rules for their project. And then they get protection from, new impact fees would be part of it. And lastly, the development agreement includes that the city will provide $2.88 million as contribution towards the affordable housing. And the city receives affordable housing, including going to 20 percent where the minimum requirement in the plan is 15 percent. So there'll be 20 percent of the units provided will be affordable in the separate building, Building 6A, with a veterans preference and also a local residence preference. The developer will provide a $2 million donation towards the rebuilding of the fire-damaged community center. The hotel construction is a fairly important aspect because, as you can see from the fiscal impact, the project's only really fiscally positive with the hotel, so it's important that that hotel proceed early on in the overall development timeframe, and that it does. It's the provisions in the DA set out a schedule for that. And lastly, the project provides publicly accessible improvements and open space that exceed the minimum standards that are required by the specific plan. I'd like to also point out that you have at your place an email that we received today from Warren Wen, communication from that individual, and also the developer had identified some conditions of approval and some alternative wording. We've provided that to you, and which ones staff thinks are acceptable and which ones we would recommend that you not support, that are up for discussion. And with that, staff is available for your questions.
Do we have any questions of the staff? Commissioner Quigg?
Sure. So I have a couple of questions. And I must say that everyone has done a lot of work on this project. I'm surprised so much has happened in the last month and a half. I do have some questions on the development agreement. However, I'm not sure if we should do that first or go down the line.
Well, it's up to you if you want to ask a question about that right now.
Well, I want to kind of keep some kind of order, so...
Okay, well, we'll go to... Anyone else have a question?
I do have a couple of questions on the staff report.
Oh, you have? Okay.
Okay. On the staff report, can you go over the fiscal impact a little bit more? Because the one that was just updated previous to that, it was a year old, a year and a half old. So can you explain that to me a little bit more? And I know it was in our packet, but there was a lot going on. So I'm hoping that you can share the comments on that.
Okay, well, the process was that they prepared fiscal impact and provided it to the city in 2016. The city had it peer reviewed by our own consultant, who identified some aspects of it that they would suggest needed to be done a little differently. So you have the copy of the city's letter together with the report from Strategic Economics. The applicant's consultant, Gruen and Gruen, who prepared the fiscal impact analysis, then provided a response to all of those comments and did not make, there were no changes made. The report that you received in 2017 has some updates which are primarily related to Consumer Price Index and the current budget, but does not change any of the models of analysis or assumptions of sales, sales tax revenue per square foot and that sort of thing. And as is indicated in the staff report, going off of the work that was done by our consultant, the estimates of revenue are very ambitious. And again, we're looking forward for a number of years in terms of the financing of the city. Things aren't always rosy, and so the concern that was raised by our consultants that we've summarized here is that the revenue estimates are a nice rosy, optimistic picture, but looking ahead 10, 20 years, shouldn't assume that this is going to happen all the time. So the revenue generation might be a little optimistic. And also, the projections with respect to costs, the, did not take into account, there was a police and fire review that was specifically done, looking at cost impacts, and that was not picked up and not responded to in the report. So some of the costs, particularly in the public safety area, may be underestimated. Having said that, that it is still clear that the project will generate a positive cash flow, meaning that the revenue anticipated from the project, once it's fully occupied, will exceed the costs of providing services to those new households and those new businesses. But that's also very dependent on the hotel, because that's one of the richer components of revenue that would come to the city as part of this project.
Also, on the South Station Road?
I'm sorry, can I add on just since you're on the FIR? So if, I mean, it says, it seems like it's saying even with the, even with the adjustments that it would be positive.
Correct.
Do we have any idea of how much difference that is? Because even the examples that you gave here, it's already $200,000 difference in the staff report. So I know it's just an example, and I don't know, is the plan to have an updated FIR? Or is there some kind of an analysis by the, whoever did the strategic, I think, evaluation?
We have not, we have not asked them to do any further analysis or to substitute their analysis for this. I mean, this is...
Okay, so there's no...
This has been shared with the applicant, and they chose not to, again, they had a very detailed letter, which you received from Gruen and Gruen, indicating why they substantiated or felt their analysis was valid. So they have not chosen to revise it as Strategic Economics suggested.
Okay, so, yeah, just because I was wondering, Strategic Economics, the level of which they're... I'm not debating whether it's going to be positive or not positive, it's just kind of curious to me, because again, even the examples given, if you just take the difference of that, that's already $200,000 difference, so discrepancy...
I picked those because they were quantified, and it was fairly straightforward to say, if we use a different number, but many of the other ones, it was more, I don't have the fiscal models that were used for it, so I wasn't able to follow through with what would the implications be, both for increased costs or the implications for revenue.
Okay, so should this go on to City Council, then there, they'll just see this? This is as far as we got, and there is no plan to actually move it any further or have a more detailed analysis than this? Is that my understanding?
That's where we're at, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Quigg?
I just want to piggyback a little bit on the fiscal impact report a little bit. So going through the Gruen-Gruen report, the one that is updated, revised on June 2017 on page two and three, there are two tables, I1 and I2. So the I1 basically summarizes the estimated annual general fund revenue upon build-out. So it has a net positive, or revenue to be about 1.8 million, 626,50, a million, yeah, 1,862,650, whereas the general fund expected to cost us to service these new development to be about 604,000 and change. So the net positive projected, it's about 1,258. With the staff report you mentioned here, a net negative another 200,000, so we're looking at roughly about $1 million of surplus on a yearly basis.
Well, there was other criticisms with, that Strategic Economics provided. Those were the two which were fairly straightforward to use as an example.
Right.
But I would say that the comments made by Strategic Economics, if you, you know, again, if you believe that they are, that their comments are accurate, would further reduce the revenue. But even with those reductions, it would still be fiscally positive.
So I just want to get a clarification. So basically, what you're currently estimating to be roughly about $1 million, pending more...
Well, I'm just saying, we just used two of the areas of criticism. We did not provide any adjustment for higher public safety costs, which was also a comment that Strategic Economics, so there's both higher costs as well as a more conservative estimate. And again, it's looking ahead. Maybe these are great numbers for right now, but we're looking ahead on the city's fiscal health over a longer period of time, and as we know, there are ups and downs in the economy, and that's why we think a more conservative perspective, as outlined by Strategic Economics, made sense to take that longer-term perspective.
So chances are, you're saying that it could produce less than $1 million a year?
Yes.
Okay, and so as I go through the, on page 17, so there is a total operating expenditure for the fiscal year 2015 and 16 for the city of Millbury as a whole, so that's our annual budget.
Yes.
It's about $25 million.
Correct.
So $1 million in surplus would represent about close to 4%?
Correct.
I just want to have that perspective for everybody.
Yes, Commissioner Quigg, you were in the middle of something earlier.
I did have a question.
You wanted to talk about South Station Road.
You started talking about South Station.
Okay, okay, I was, and then we went back to this.
Sorry, yeah, I just went to, while you're on that subject.
On this same subject, though, I think it would be very important to get a better understanding before the council really, even if we were to recommend it, I would think that this is not a very clear report for them. So I would certainly recommend that we do a better job on that and include the costs for public safety. We're now going to have a lot of people in that area in BART and train, and I think we need to look at the public safety costs. Okay. Yes, the South Station Road as a second access. So I guess there's been a lot going on and making it wider and less wide and two ways. Can you go over that a little bit, please?
Okay. The South Station Road is located here. It sits between Building 5A, which is the market rate residential, and the toe of the slope for supporting the railway tracks. The road continues on one way now, and it continues into a road that is one-way on the other side of Millbury Avenue on the south side, that kind of wanders through the commercial development on that side. As we evaluated it in our discussions within the city and with the applicant, the way that the site has been developed, there really isn't, I mean, even if we made that road two-way, the only place you can really go is into the parking garage. Not to say that that's not useful, but the only way we could make other connections would be to connect to East Station Road, which has been set up as the shuttle area, so then you would have commute travel, traffic going through an area where we're trying to prioritize for shuttle loading and unloading. Another idea that was raised was eliminating the public plaza or eliminating it for part of the day, but this public plaza is a fairly, I think, a fairly important amenity to the community. It's lined by retail activity. I think eliminating it would change the character and would be a loss of an important aspect of the project. And the other problem with connecting across East Station, to East Station Road, is you would then put a roadway between the station and pedestrians getting off there and the pedestrian plaza or people going to their cars or to catch buses and things like that, that there would be a priority of vehicles over the pedestrians in that area, and it would reduce the ability to use the improved BART plaza as a community gathering space as an amenity for transit users in that area. So those are the challenges for looking forward to making that two-way. The right-of-way that's laid out really would not accommodate two-way traffic, so to preserve that option into the future, the South Station right-of-way, the reservation, would have to be wider than what's there. What's there is intended to accommodate one lane of vehicle travel, a sidewalk, and two bicycle travel lanes. And if we want to preserve the option of considering two-way traffic in the future, that right-of-way should be made wider, and that would be, it's not included in the recommendation. That would have to be something that you would ask us to put in and send on to the council.
I'm anxious to see if anyone else has anything to say about that, but I think that it's very important that we preserve some kind of easements, so that if we needed to change something in the future, we would be able to do so. Once that land is gone and, and there's a building on top of it, it's, it's just not going to happen. And even if we don't do it now, and if we don't do it ever, that's wonderful. That's just more open space for everyone. But I think that the open space is more than what is required if, for some reason, we had to make that two-way traffic for some reason or other. I mean, I just feel we need to be more cautious and looking forward for the next generation.
Yes, the, both parcels, A and B, exceed the minimum 10% open space, publicly accessible open space for those sites.
Okay.
Any other comments, Commissioner Joe?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, do we, do we want to be going into a discussion right now, or should we just have this as a clarification time of the staff clarification questions and then have public comment, and then we have our discussion? Or, I don't know what's the, I know we've done it different ways, and so I just wanted to clarify, because I, just which way we, what the other commission members, because we usually have our discussion afterward as well, so...
Yeah, I think it might be a good idea for us to ask all the questions upfront, and then we can save a little time for ourselves for a discussion later, because I don't think we had that discussion last time when we had the meeting. So I think it's important for us to reserve that time among the five of us in front of the public to discuss that. But we can ask all the questions to the staff.
Maybe, right, the clarification questions now, and then maybe hold off on the discussion until later?
Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, and next, the applicant...
I'm sorry, I have a general question to ask. So with the draft of the development agreement that we received, again, thank you for just all the hard work that's gone into this, because it's clearly, it's hard enough just to read it, but to imagine going through all of the preparation is unimaginable for the applicant and the staff especially. The development agreement draft, is this something that is, where, is this something that the applicant and, and the staff, it's already, we could be recommending this, or are there things in the development agreement that are still a point of contention?
I can answer that. I'd say the development agreement is 99% complete.
Okay.
Unlike the other development, there were not a list of provisions that the developer had issues with. There's still one... There's still one or two issues that are open. There are really not so much development issues. There's an issue in terms of FEMA mapping and, and just in terms of flood control questions?
I think that's been addressed, but.
Okay. So we're, but that's in the agreement, it's, okay, in the agreement it's not. So that shows as something under discussion. And let's see, that, we still have a future agreement in terms of the payment of the city's contribution towards the affordable housing. But that's not really in the development agreement. It'll be a separate agreement to be agreed to in the future. And otherwise, there's really not a lot we were able to work through it, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Feng?
So as I go over the staff report, I also recognize that there is some section in there that talks about the granting temporary occupancy permit to potentially the market rate housing. Can I get some clarification on the reasoning behind that and the benefit of such strategy?
One of the difficult issues that we addressed in dealing with the development agreement was the timing. Unlike the other development, this project has features that the city is very, is not only, is eager to get and is concerned about the timing. The initial proposal had those features sort of at the tail end and just mostly related to how the developer planned to stage their construction. They were going to use the areas for the affordable housing and hotel as construction lay-down for the construction of the other areas. They since came back with a proposal to, to change that. But nevertheless, there is a certain sequence of construction, and what we've tried to do, to the extent we could, is build some controls in as to when they will deliver the various pieces. One of the arrangements we agreed upon with regard, there's a little bit of tension with regard to the development of the market rate housing and the, and the development of the affordable housing. And so there's an incentive for them to get the, get the affordable housing started. And one of those incentives is that the city would have the ability to withhold the final certificate of occupancy if the vertical construction on the affordable housing portion is not commenced. So that's one of a couple of enforcement mechanisms to make sure that happens. I don't think, the other thing we mentioned with regard to the hotel was the, a payment so that if the hotel is not delivered on schedule, then there's a, a payment that kicks in to basically duplicates the transit occupancy tax payment so that the city, if there's a delay in developing, in delivering the hotel, the city's made whole for the revenue loss. So, so that, the, the arrangement that we've agreed to on a staff level, that is, is the, if the market rate housing is under construction, it, it would get a temporary certificate of occupancy, which would allow them to occupy, would not allow them to get their final, to clear their final construction loan. So there's a financial incentive for them to, to complete it, and that would, could be withheld if, if the vertical construction, the affordable housing is not started.
So sort of question on that is, if we were to issue that temporary occupancy permit, who can move in?
Everyone.
Okay. So the question is, if we issued that temporary occupancy permit?
Right.
And if the affordable housing unit never got completed?
Right.
What do we do?
Well, I think there would be a, you would have a, one, you would not issue the final, which means that, that potentially is more expensive for them. I, I think the other alternative was probably one we wouldn't consider, and that is terminating the occupancy permit, which would then require the building to be vacated. That's, that's probably a bridge we're not going to cross. But there's some risk of that in terms of, but I think that's, that's a remedy the city could, could decide, but it's obviously not one that's going to be.
Have we considered any other alternatives?
Not real, well, I mean, the trouble is, we're trying to work with the timing of when the different buildings would be, would be delivered. So I think practically, not in the arrangements, this is something we went over for a very long time. I think the other incentive is the payment of the city's contribution towards the affordable housing and what the timing of that is, though, as a way of enforcing the delivery of the affordable housing. That's, I think, our other, our other stick.
Okay. All right. And then the, and then as far as the hotel goes as well, I, you know, when I read over the staff report, supplemental staff report on page four, I think? So there is a, what's considered a delayed hotel payment, meaning if they do not complete the hotel within, within the first 28 months after the commencement of the construction, then penalty payment will be due and it'll be calculated based on 85% of what's considered a rack rate of a room in San Mateo County. And then, but, you know, some sort of provision in there when I read it, it says the penalties are limited in the aggregate to no more than 12 months of payment. Trying to understand what that means. If they go beyond 12 months, then what happened?
Then we, we know that we would not get the payments anymore. So it's a, it's a cap on what those damages are.
So the cap of the damage for them to delay it would be up to 12 months of payment. If they would have delayed it for, you know, for the sake of argument, 10 years, then the rest of the nine, we won't get anything.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Quigg?
Yes, I had that same question, and you kind of answered it, but I wasn't real happy with what you said, so. The part about finishing them, what's in the development agreement? Right. However, temporary occupancy, including allowing tenants to occupy units, will be permitted. I think you're jumping into the fire to do that. Once a temporary occupancy permit is issued, you might as well just kind of kiss goodbye. I've seen it too many times, and I would personally, I mean, and we're just now making comments, so when we get to the other part, I will issue my feelings, but I've seen too many. I would tend to think there is something else that staff can come up with that would guarantee that this would happen and not to issue a temporary occupancy permit. So that's kind of what I, I feel that we're leaving ourselves open. I mean, I, I feel the rest of it, timing is okay. That part bothers me, and I think the other part that bothers me is something that, what Commissioner Feng just said about after 12 months, then they're off the hook? No. I think we're just being far too easy on it. I mean, these, this project is really, really, really important to us, and I think we're leaving too many loose ends here, so.
I may. So I just want to get one more clarification if I can. The temporary occupancy permit, can we limit the scope of what we allow them to occupy, such as sales office, demo units, for example, but not actual occupancy?
Right.
Of the occupants?
That could be your recommendation.
Yeah, and I.
That makes sense?
I would feel better about that.
Right. So I mean, I guess we should not stop them from marketing these properties, but rather occupying the property is a different issue. Right? Okay. So we can put these conditions in, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was a good thought. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Then.
Will you have another?
Yes. On, also on the development agreement, I, I think it's admirable that they would be donating $2 million to rebuild the community center. But once again, now we have donated or contributed 2.88 million to affordable housing. So to me, that's kind of a, we're still losing money. But I don't know how anyone else feels or how the city council would feel on it, but I think building the community center is wonderful, but I hate to kind of see us tied up with just one project. I would like to see that opened up. Yes, we want the $2 million. Yes, first choice would be the community center, but if it takes a tremendous amount of time to build this community center, there might be another need that would service the whole community. So I, I just kind of, that kind of didn't stuck real great with me. And then, oh, the, the hotel, we kind of covered that already. Did we get into the parking situation yet?
I have a question.
I, I continue to have tremendous concern on the loss of the BART parking.
And I'm, I'm sorry to interject, but I think we, we said we wanted to keep it to questions for clarification and.
Right. So I, I need to get.
Okay.
If you could please go over that loss of parking.
There's sort of two components to it. First of all, the parking lots that we currently see within the, the BART area, all of those are going to be basically taken up and redeveloped. There will be a new parking lot at the northeast corner, sort of against Aviador and up against the High, High Line Canal, that will have approximately 390 parking spaces, together with the garage. That would result in a total amount of parking provided of around 24, just over 2,400 spaces, whereas right now there's about almost 3,000 spaces. The environmental impact report and the specific plan both looked at and acknowledged that there was going to be a loss of parking. The EIR evaluated the loss of 556 parking spaces. And then also, BART had a station access and circulation plan prepared, which acknowledged that there's going to be fewer cars that can, fewer of the BART patrons or Caltrain patrons, whoever, will be able to come to this area by automobile. They'll have to come by other means. And there, in their access plan, they, they looked at changes to connecting by bus, walking, bicycling, coming in ride share or various ride services that you, that you could have. And they acknowledged that that may affect ridership, but it will be in an area that's going to have significant number of households and commercial activities where those people will be using BART. So they did not see long-term that there's going to be an impact on ridership. But for those individuals who currently come and park at the BART station, there's going to be less parking and some of those folks will have to make alternative arrangements. With respect to parking, the overall site is deficient in parking, particularly for the affordable housing is short nine spaces and the hotel is short 18 spaces from meeting the minimum standards. One of the conditions of approval provides that we would work with them on a parking management plan. So again, if there was ability to use some of the parking lot or the, the parking garage, taking a look at that, how, how we could make all of that parking work harder for us, that we might be willing to go forward with it, but it would be dependent on that parking management plan that would come back to the planning commission.
Okay. I think, oh.
Sorry. So just a little piggyback on the $2 million of community center contribution, should and if the community center never get materialized, what happened? And what is the timing of that contribution?
I think that the timing of the, actually, I think, Michael, do you want to? Okay. Well, the, the way it's written in the development agreement is it's very specific to be to the community center. If that didn't proceed, I think, that's also a question you could ask the applicant when they come up to speak, but the way it's written, a conservative interpretation would mean they would not have to give that money if we never started that construction. And I think the timing is that it's due at the building permit.
Due at, due at which building permit?
Well, if we're ready to go, if we, if we're moving forward, if they don't have to pay it until they're ready to go. So it's kind of like, we're moving forward on the, on the center and they're moving forward on the construction. So when they have a building permit, do they have to pay it, provided we've moved forward on our own plans to reconstruct the commercial center, the community center? Sorry.
So the timing is the latter of us building the community center and them putting their building permit?
And again, some of this stuff is late-breaking.
Section 237, so the $2 million is due to the issuance of the first building permit for the market rate housing building. So we get that, that money would be paid upfront.
So it would be at the commencement of the building permit, well, the issuance of the building, about the building permit for the market rate housing, provided that we do build the community center?
Yes.
And then the $2 million, when I read, when I was reading the staff report, it says it's coming from a charitable donation organization?
That the donation would be made through a nonprofit, that's correct.
For a nonprofit, right. So it would basically be a tax write-off for the applicant, is that correct?
I believe that's, that's the intent, yeah.
So there's a tax benefit on there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, I just would remind you that after the public comment, you have two, a document that's landscape format, which has their requested changes for you to pay attention to as part of your discussion when you get to discussing action on the project. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is the applicant present here to address this?
I'm going to come and pick which one you. I don't know. I'm just giving you that. Is it this one? Yes. So if you want to go forward and back? Okay, well, just in case you want to go backwards, that's how you do it.
Speaking forward and back is up and down, basically?
Up and down.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Colette. Good evening. Glad to be back here again. My name's Kelly Arardi. I'm the Senior Vice President of Forward Planning for Republic Family Companies and the Project Executive for the Gateway at Millbury Center. Again, I'd like to start by thanking the Planning Commission for all your time and deliberation on this project. I'd also like to thank your entire staff for their good and diligent work that has resulted in bringing this project's comprehensive staff report and recommendation before you this evening. As staff has said, and Ms. Quigg actually said, we've made great progress, has been made since October 16th Planning Commission, and that progress includes a development agreement that your staff has recommended to approve. I think that's great news. We made a commitment at that meeting that we would continue to diligently work on this process. All parties met several times and really worked hard to get to where we are today. I think we have a sound deal that we can live with. It's a, it's a deal that is workable in the financial markets. It's workable, it's, we're able to build the project with these conditions. And I think your city attorney and your city manager, your staff did a good job to get the guarantees that you need to make sure you're protected also. I'd like to give special thanks to Tanya Ward, Tom Adelania, and Colette Munier for all their hard work. We've done a lot of arm wrestling, but I think we got to a point where we have a really good project in front of you. I'd also like to thank a number of people who are in the crowd tonight. That includes vets, unions, housing advocates, citizens, and all the other supporters that have taken their valuable time this evening to come out and support our transit-oriented development. How many of you are vets here? If you could just raise your hand, please? Again, thank you for your service, thank you for coming out, thank you for your support on the project. And union members have here? Wow, thank you again. Again, it's, it's a lot to come out and volunteer your own time on a project, a developer's project, so we really appreciate that. I know we have other Millbury citizens out here and other groups that are in support of the project, too. If the chairman doesn't ask you, I'll ask you as in the, to save a little time, if there are one or two representatives that can state your positions, it would be great because I think we have a lot of details to discuss this evening on the project. And again, I appreciate you all coming out here. It's ultimately your decision, but that would be helpful to probably move the process What I'd like to do now is basically tell you, we're in support of staff's recommendations with some minor comments, which you have a summary of those comments. We'd like you to, we'd like you to approve the findings under SEQA. We'd like you to approve the site development permit. We'd like you to approve the conditional use permit that's before you and the vesting tentative map. We think the conditions that staff is recommending are. We think the conditions that staff is recommending are acceptable and work for us. What I'd like to do, that maybe move things along a little bit, too, you had some questions about the fiscal impact report, you had questions about parking, access, number of parking stalls. We have cadre of experts here to answer all your questions tonight, and hopefully we can answer every question so you can take action. We have our architect from Studio T Squared, which is our master architect for the project. We have our office architect from Form 4 here. We have our market rate architect and affordable architect from LPMD is here. Our civil engineer and our landscape architect is here from HMH. Our traffic consultant, Prasadan Associates, is here. Our fiscal impact analysis consultant from Grun &amp; Grun is here. The Marriott Residence Inn architect is here. Our affordable developer, Core, is here. Our project attorney from Berliner Cohen is here. So we're all here to answer your questions. And our desire tonight is to get a recommendation to move forward to the city council. The first person I'd like to introduce is Aaron Grun from Grun &amp; Grun &amp; Associates. Aaron did our fiscal impact analysis. He's been in the business for years and years. I think he's done over 1,500 analyses for cities, developers, other groups. And I think he can walk you through the fiscal analysis and answer the questions that you have, and also defend his assumptions, which we believe are reasonable and achievable. So Aaron, I'm going to have you come up right now.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address some of the questions and concerns that have been raised this evening. The first thing I'd like to point out is the estimates that were presented in the report reflected significant input from then-city staff and information and insight obtained from the former police chief of Millbrae, who's now with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and the fire chief of the Central County Fire Department, along with reviews of the actual provisions of the agreements you have on fire and police service. We really appreciate the staff's time and everyone making the documents and other information available to us. I'll start with, I think, essential key point, that even if we change the analysis to reflect the revenue assumptions preferred by the peer reviewer, the project would still generate a net revenue surplus of over $1 million. And this would be the case even excluding the proposed hotel use, where the net surplus would be $312,000 using the peer reviewer assumptions and $474,000 under our assumptions. So just to clarify, because it wasn't, I think, apparent in the earlier discussion, even without the hotel use, the project will generate a significant amount of net positive impact to the general fund. Now, what the staff report and the peer reviewer does not highlight is that when we did the analysis, we actually increased the budget over your actual spending levels, so that in effect, we've provided for a higher level of service to the community because of the project. We've assumed a much higher level of service, of service costs that are variable, or in other words, change with changes in population or employment than actually are the case. For example, even though the fire chief does not expect a significant impact on fire and emergency response due to the proposed development, and much of the annual cost to serve the joint service area are fixed, and there's even a contract that provides for these costs to be fixed, to be very conservative, we assume that 50% of the fire costs and emergency service costs change with changes in population and employment. And we also provided for an additional half a million dollars to fully staff a ladder truck. Ladder lets you serve higher buildings than smaller buildings. So this is in effect, providing for service quality enhancement that you don't currently have, and we factored that into the cost. The other factor that I think may have been missed, and I appreciate the staff has an enormous amount of material to go through, and the analysis was done some time ago, is that actually, the fire service costs are higher, allocated to this project are higher than the cost assigned under the specific plan, where you had a separate financial or fiscal analysis done for you. So we're using a higher cost than your own previous consultants. Also, the revenue estimates are understated. They don't reflect real estate transfer tax, business license taxes, charges and fees for various services and other related funding arrangements. Nor do we incorporate sales tax or hotel tax that would come from the visitors to the hotels, the workers at the office space, or the residents. We only counted the sales generated by the retail space to generate the sales tax estimate. In addition, we assume that two office or other workers generate the same level of service demand as one resident. But the peer reviewer's own work, for you, had three workers equivalent to one resident. So in effect, we have a higher service cost than your own peer reviewer. These are all ways, we think, makes the estimates not overstated or understated, but our best judgment of what's likely to occur. In addition, the report and the response to the peer review comments about, we received no objection or further comment after we submitted the response, back up all the assumptions about hotel occupancy rates, retail sales, apartment rents, and capitalization rents, and in fact, show that they're lower than what is currently the case, and they're lower than what's occurred in the past five years. Let me give you one example, since hotels dear to many people's considerations. Let me put that estimate in context. If you look at our estimates, they produce a lower transient occupancy tax than any of your existing hotels. If you look at the value we've placed on the hotel for purpose of property tax, is lower than the assessed value for the aloft hotel. But this is going to be a new hotel in a better location. So we think that in many ways, it's a conservative estimate. The bottom line is that the annual net surplus at build-out is estimated to range from about $1 million using the revenue assumptions with the peer reviewer, or about 1.2 million under the assumptions described in our report. And this effectively provides for enhanced service quality because of the development. And I would note, for example, on the hotel, in your damage provision, you're assuming a much higher occupancy rate and daily rate than we're assuming. And that was based, apparently, from what I just heard, on what's going on in San Mateo County. So I hope that gives you some feel that we've tried our best to give an objective analysis that accurately reflects your costs and revenues likely to be induced. But even if we're really wrong, it's still positive.
Thank you, Aaron. The point I take with this whole thing is, any fiscal impact analysis is going to be in a range. Mr. Grun has defended his analysis very well, and I'm sure he can answer any questions you might have if you want to dig further down into the weeds. But I think what you have is adequate to send on to the city council, that it's a range. We all know it's an estimate, things can change, and it's defendable. And he's been in the business a long time, and he's done reports for developers, he's done it for cities, he's done it for all aspects of the industry. So, moving along to the next topic, again, there were, there were questions about, again, access, parking, how the roads work. Again, Pete Prasadi is here with Prasadi &amp; Associates. He's been on the project longer than I have. I've been here up on three years now. And the project that you see before you is a culmination of years of negotiations, discussions, meetings with all types of stakeholders, from the city, from BART, to Caltrans, to Cal, to the Caltrain, have all, we've all sat in meetings and gone over the access plan, done micro simulations, done all sorts of work to come up with this conclusion, taken everybody's concerns into consideration, and have come up with a plan that we think is very pedestrian-oriented, very friendly, and integrated project that'll work well in the marketplace. So I'm going to have Pete to help you understand this, because it's four years of work, really, walk you through how we got here and why we, we and your staff support the plan that's before you. So Pete?
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Chairman, other members, the planning commission, as Kelly mentioned, I'm Pete Prasadi with Prasadi &amp; Associates. Just a quick background, I've been doing transportation, traffic engineering, planning for 40 years, as a city traffic engineer, as a Caltrans engineer, as a consultant, working for both government agencies as well as developers, and also as an advocate for motorists and transit users, working for the Auto Club as a legislative analyst and a lobbyist. As Kelly said, we started with this project over four years ago, and really, there are two challenges. One was the decision that was made by BART to utilize the resources to develop a transit-related, oriented development. What that means is, the customers that you have that drive from out of the area and come into this area to use the station, create a business and residential element that replaces that mode of travel. Basically, you're reducing vehicle miles of travel. Rather than people coming here to utilize the station, your customer is now next to the station. That's one of the fundamental reasons why you need less parking, because you're really changing your scope and changing your orientation of who your customer is and where that customer is. This was a strategic decision that BART had made, and that's why this project started. So it wasn't something that we were proposing, it was a policy decision that BART had made, and it's a sound decision, it's a sound use of resources, it's not just happening here. I work up and down California, San Diego, Southern California, up here. So transit-oriented development, that's the concept. Bring your customer close to the station to reduce that extra amount of traffic and extra length of traffic. You're reducing vehicle miles of travel, basically. So that's really the basis why you don't need as much parking, because people aren't coming here, they reside there. So the parking that we're providing for the office users and the parking that we're providing for the residents, that's really the parking that's now being used by others. We're not touching the parking garage at all. And so that's one of the fundamental changes to this area. Now, I want to talk about the access to this site and the South Station Road, East Station Road, two-way traffic, one-way traffic. First of all, the traffic study that was done by the city for the specific plan assumed the same kind of orientation as what we're dealing with right now. South Station Road was assumed to be performing as it is right now. South Station Road, one of the probably key and most significant constraints with South Station Road is the Millbrae Bridge. For a two-way traffic, the Millbrae Bridge has to be reconstructed completely. I don't think that's really that feasible, or it's going to happen anytime soon. One of the reasons for that is, you've got to look at your origin and destination. Who is it that wants to come to this place that would use that South Station Road as an ingress or inbound traffic? You basically have to go in a roundabout way to go through Darien to come back to this area to get into the site. We are not changing the outbound at all, so South Station Road will still provide exit. The BART garage and the residential garage will still have access to South Station Road for exiting this site. If somebody from the area is really, really interested in using South Station Road, they can even go through the garage and get out off of this area through South Station Road. So what we don't have is just the inbound in South Station Road. And there really is no reason for that, because when you look at the orientation of the site and where people are coming from, there is really minimal demand for somebody to use South Station Road to enter this site, unless you want to change the orientation of the site such that whether it's East Station Road or Garden Lane becomes a traffic-oriented facility, which again, changes the whole character of this place that we're trying to make. The whole idea of this area is to be a place for people to walk, to utilize the transit facility, to utilize the interaction that we're trying to create between the residential, the office, the station, the station plaza. The station plaza is really the combination of, everybody is basically being oriented toward that, and we're looking at that to be a gathering place, someplace that it's protected from true traffic. It's basically a place that people feel comfortable. Garden Lane, again, it is supposed to be a pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly type of a facility. We're not trying to create a downtown in here where vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists come together. We're trying to create a place, it's a placemaking. And the emphasis on that is, keep the traffic to the outside, that's what Rollins Road does, that's what Millbrae does, and keep Garden Lane and East Station Road for local purposes. The connection of East Station Road and Garden Lane to South Station Road, we did look at it. We had different alternatives when we first started. We were looking at, in fact, there were those at BART, Bruno, who's been on this project as long as I have, knows there were people that were thinking, well, if we bring more vehicles here through Garden Lane, maybe we can increase the use of the station. And when we all worked together and we saw the alternatives and the impacts it would have, everybody agreed, let's keep Garden Lane as a people place and don't introduce traffic through it, whether it's, you know, going in or going out. Let's preserve that as a place that is really special, that you could do things with. East Station Road, we purposely sized it for shuttles, and we don't want shuttles to go and connect with South Station Road for a variety of reasons. One, the shuttles that use this area, this station, want to get back onto the freeway as soon as possible. So for a shuttle to go to Station Road, East Station Road, and then connect with South Station Road, they would have to go under the bridge, go through Darien, come on to Rollins, make a left turn, and then try to get back into the right turn lane to get back on to Millbrae to get on to the freeway. Just the travel time alone is something that's prohibitive, and they won't use it. The bigger issue is even the clearance that you would need to have East Station Road connect with South Station Road. The BART looked at it, and it was in excess of $20 million to change the orientation of the columns, to provide for path to travel, because those 40-footers and 45-foot shuttles don't turn very easily. So that path to travel, again, was a challenge. So what we did was, we created a turnaround at the end of East Station Road, that actually took a chunk of the office building, by the way, to provide that turnaround. And all of the impacts of our traffic, the circulation, the orientation of the intersections and all that, were reviewed twice by staff. In fact, at one point, we had a traffic signal at Garden Lane and Rollins. And as a part of that microsimulation and operational level of analysis, not what you see in an EIR, which is more of a planning level, but this was a very, very detailed level analysis, the decision was made not to have a traffic signal there and just have a pedestrian-activated signal there, so that we provide the right-of-way and the protection for the pedestrians, but allow more efficient movement of vehicles so that there is no backup to Rollins and Millbrae. So there's a lot of people here, you have a lot on your agenda, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background and flavor. This wasn't something that was just put together because, you know, it was easy to do, or we were trying to, you know, jam it all there. were trying to, you know, jam it all there. It really had a lot of discussion, had a lot of planning. The, Tanya has been here from the get-go, and Tom, and Steve at Simmons that reviewed all of our work on behalf of the city. We've had a wonderful working relationship, thanks to all of them, and I just want to let you know what went into this, and be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any other speakers for the applicant?
Sure. Again, in the interest of answering questions or anticipating answering questions, I'd like Sean Brooks to come up here just to say a few, have a few comments. He's with BART, he's our partner, and he's been, you know, he's been a critical part of this development, and he's been informed all along the way what we're doing, as well as the, when the specific plan was approved and the project that we're presenting to you today. That's been reviewed by the BART Board and endorsed and approved, as long as we don't make substantial plans to it. And I also want to mention that this plan is designed around the specific plan, which you and the City Council approved, and your staff says that in the staff report, that the way this plan is now, with the pedestrian, being pedestrian-oriented, bicycle-oriented, it meets the goals and, meets the goals of the specific plan and the policies. So I just want to point that out, too. I think Pete gave a great history lesson. It's been a long, it's been a long way coming. So Sean, if you want to speak a little bit?
Good evening, Chair Walker, Vice Chair Davis, Commissioners Fong, Joe, and Quigg. Once again, thanks for the opportunity to come here and represent BART and really talk about this project. You know, when we think about projects, BART looks at opportunities to be very catalytic. So we're excited about the opportunity to be able to move forward, and we're excited about staff's recommendation and recommending that the project move forward. Within our overall portfolio, as we mentioned, what could be catalytic, this is one of the opportunities that definitely fits within that realm, and once again, we're excited to be a part of this. As the Bay Area becomes ever more congested with more and more traffic, one of the solutions to alleviate that is definitely good transit and access to transit. People often refer to transit-oriented development, and this is the case as well, but the growing nomenclature is really transit-oriented communities. So this will become a community, and it will become a community within the overall Millbrae community. While we would like to bring transit to everyone, we know that oftentimes that's not viable. But one of the other options is actually to bring people to the transit, and so this is where this provides a unique opportunity to do that. And so this development, once again, is pioneering in that aspect. Just wanted to touch upon, if I may, one of the points that was brought up earlier in terms of limiting the TCO for a portion of development. Really would like the Planning Commission to kind of really think about the implications to that. What that does do with the development, it makes it difficult to obtain financing on that market rate development, as lenders are maybe reluctant to move forward, knowing that there's not a guarantee that those units could be occupied on the back end. So that's something to think about. While the belief or notion, the intent, definitely I understand, it's just something that we should take into consideration to really ensure that the development can actually be built. So let's keep that in mind. With that in mind, though, I really want to thank the Planning Commission for really their foresight, all the recommendations that you have provided and brought forth, as well as the City of Millbrae staff, and really to encourage the Planning Commission to keep moving forward in the process, and also to keep working with the developer and bringing a project forward. We view ourselves as partners with the City of Millbrae, as well as with the Developer Republic, and so that partnership allows us to kind of do some really extraordinary things in the Bay Area. So thank you again, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. One other subject to address is the comments on the development agreement. I want to echo Mr. Brook's comments about toying with the temporary, the TCO. We need that. If we can't occupy that project with tenants, we can't get a construction loan. That's $115 million that we will not be able to get. If we can't get a final occupancy, which is the, the ham, one of the hammers you have over us, we will be in default of $115 million construction loan, we will not be able to get permanent financing, it'll put the whole project at jeopardy. That's the sequence of how we got here on the DA. If yours, if, if you, just keep that in mind when you're talking about this TCO, if you take that away, we don't have a project. I could tell you we could do it, but our lenders wouldn't lend us the money. So it's a, it's a dead deal if that occurs. I can't say that strong enough. The other issue I'd like to talk about is the contributions on the affordability and the question about our $2 million contribution to the community center and the city's help with $2.8 million on the affordable. I'm gonna do a little math here, and then I'm gonna get off, I'm gonna get off the podium here. We're providing 5% more affordable units than what's required in the specific plan. That's 20 more units. That's 20 more units at a very deep affordability level, low and very low. That equates to rents of, if it was built today, somewhere between $900 and $2,000 a month. How many vets would like to rent a space at a transit-oriented development for $900 to $2,000 a month? And how many can you afford to do that? Raise your hand, please. Little high, so it's even a little high at that number. But how many of you can afford, raise your hand if you cannot afford to pay $3,3500 a month in the market rate? Okay. So my, my point being is it's a tremendous community benefit. The cost to build those 20 extra units for Core, our development partners, probably about $12.5 million. So with your net contribution of $1 million, you get 20 more units of affordable, you get housing for people who really need it. I think that's worth the risk, and you, you just heard Mr. Grun about the fiscal impact report, somewhere between $901.2 million a year you're gonna get when this project is built out, hopefully forever. I think that's a small price to pay, to pay the vets back here that have, you know, written a check that sometimes includes their lives, and I think it's a good deal for the city. So I'll close with those comments. Again, we have all our other consultants available to answer questions, and I hope at the end of this evening you'll move this project forward to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have about 10 speakers that have identified themselves here, and to...
Could we have questions for the applicant?
We can do that at the end of all the public, that way it's all sort of got everything on the table. We have, we have quite a crowd here, so. Okay, so we only have 10 of the speaker slips here, and yes...
I have a question. Can we limit it to a maximum of two minutes? Absolutely, one or two?
We only have 10 slips. We only have 10 speakers. We're talking a half an hour.
Well, it's still a half hour.
Okay, well...
I would recommend...
We can set the timer for two and see how it goes, okay? Can that be set on that remote? Okay. Okay, well, I've got a slip here from one party or group of parties that had to leave early. I'll read this off quick, this is theirs. Hello, I'm Justin Carney, and I'm Jared Kong. We live in Millbrae and are seniors at Mills High School. We are here today to advocate the Gateway at Millbrae Station project and the 55 units of housing allocated for veterans contained therein. We believe the affordable housing provision of the project is an effective and proactive solution to situational homelessness because it helps the veterans obtain stable housing in our community. The housing proposal would restore balance for military families and support veterans who may be struggling to find or keep a permanent home, while simultaneously recognizing many of these individuals may be service workers or minimum wage earners unable to afford rent at market rates. We respectfully request the Millbrae Planning Commission support affording, affordable housing for military families and veterans. We are high school students and must leave to study. Here are our comments. Okay, so there's the first public input. Now, our next speaker slip is Carol Liu, L-E-W. Is, here we go. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'll give you a heads up on who's coming up next, is Adam Strambell.
Okay, this is the month of December, the month that I think about veterans a lot that's out there, that is not able to come back. I'm, before I go further, I'm here in support of the veterans with the housing for the apartment buildings, why we should, you know, have that passed for them.
I'm gonna interrupt you briefly. I know there are a lot of speakers here in favor of the vets, and I want to be sure that each of the speakers coming up is thinking through what they're gonna say. Say what you want to say directly, without repetition, and to the point, so that we can keep the meeting moving along. Thank you very much.
Mine's gonna be different, trust me. Do I start over to two minutes or what? Because you interrupted my times, I don't know how much, how longer I have.
Just go ahead and speak.
Okay. You know, they don't have a choice to, you know, to come, to come back when they want to come back. They don't, they can't call in sick. They, you know, they don't have a choice. Because they don't have a choice, that gave us the freedom to have that choice, to do what we, I mean, to be here, to celebrate at this time with their families, when they're out there fighting, just those things, right? There should be enough to say, you know what? You know, thinking about them and appreciating them, and your way of saying thank you, you know, we haven't forgotten, you are not forgotten, it should never be forgotten. You know, it's the cops and firemen's, they can come back, they come back home, even though they might not come back home on that day, but they still come back home to family. The veterans don't have that choice, they're out there. They can't call in sick, they don't have that time, or they don't have that choice. But anyway, because of that, you know what, it's never, never a wrong time or place to honor a veteran, never. I just thought I have to say that, because that's the way it is.
Thank you. Okay, Adam Sable's our next, Strambell is our next speaker, and after him we'll have James Regomes.
Hi, everybody, it's great to be here. My name's Adam, I live in Millbrae. I'm here representing myself, my wife, and then two friends and both of their spouses, so representing those six individuals. It's great to be here. Tom actually gave me a call a couple of weeks ago, I've been trading emails with some people. I'm here to support the project, the, the construction project, I think it should happen as quickly as possible. This is my second Millbrae meeting, I was here at the last one and then this one, and it's, it's interesting to hear the, sort of the back and forth. I fully support this project. Living in Millbrae, the problem is housing and volume. So my wife and I, we just found out we're pregnant, so about six months ago. So we're expecting a baby, and so it changes sort of the calculus of, you know, where do we want to live, where do we want to work? And we love Millbrae, we've lived here for a few years now, we want to stay here, we plan on staying here. And then after we found out we were pregnant, our rent went up, so we're renters. Couple hundred dollars a month went up, and we looked at it, so we did the same thing that everybody would do when your rent goes up, you look, CEO, what are our options, what else can we look at? I'd say we're both gainfully employed, so we're like, well, you know, let's consider our options. I'm not sure, you know, how many people have looked for apartments in Millbrae, the, you know, if you find one for under $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom apartment, you're lucky. If you're having kids, you know, what does that look like? So it's like, oh, maybe, maybe we'll buy an apartment, or maybe we'll buy a condo or something small, you know, live in a shoebox, you know, we love it here, you know, let's make it work, we're young. The, you know, one day we were excited, we're like, oh, here's a house for $900,000. And it's like, oh, maybe, maybe we could make this work. Turns out the, you know, the mortgage and taxes on that is close to $5,700 a month. We want to live here, we want to stay here, we want it to be possible. There's, there's the phrase "community impact." I see the, the value of this beyond just the taxes. If there was zero income to the city from this, I would still support it. The, me and the six individuals who live here, pay taxes here, would still support it. The benefit is the housing. I don't see it at least as the, the additional tax revenue. If this was revenue neutral, I support this project. I live here, I want, want this to happen, and I think the city should do everything it can to speed it up, make it happen as quickly as possible. I know it's been, the back and forth has been for a while, there's, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged by the progress, I want to see this happen, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Our next speaker, James Regomes.
Good evening, Chairperson Walker and members of the Planning Commission and city staff. My name is James Regomes. I'm with San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council, which is comprised of 26 construction unions and 16,000 highly skilled men and women, many of which live here in Millbrae, and many of which are in attendance tonight. As the developer spokesperson said, in an effort to serve time, save time, I'd like all those individuals to rise and stay standing while I speak on their behalf. They could all come up and say that they support this project, but time is very important to all of us. We support Republic's development here in Millbrae in the transportation corridor. This project conforms with the city's vision in Millbrae area-specific plan that this commission created. It is time to approve Gateway at Millbrae Station with this outstanding community partner, Republic. Republic has committed to hire contractors that will create hundreds of good construction jobs that will pay wages that folks could live on here in our county, that, that give them health care for them and their families, and maybe something to retire on. These are the members of our affiliates. These members are highly skilled and well-trained to build the project that your city will be proud of and will last the test of time. The benefits to the city and tax revenue will help the city and its constituents to thrive. They will also build 20% of the homes affordable with the, with the preference to returning veterans from our armed forces. Our Building Trades has a program called Helmets to Hard Hats. Our unions encourage returning veterans to utilize that program to enroll into one of our affiliated unions. We encourage the Millbrae Planning Commission and the city staff, and eventually the city council, to negotiate the development agreement with Republic and to finally get this construction project started. I wrote down a quote on the back of the black t-shirts out here that I think is really important. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And we're so happy that we have the access to public hearings to express our feelings about our projects, and thank you so much for the time tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker is Emily Coogan, and following her would be Stefan Yu.
Hi. So I think the Planning Commission is probably starting to recognize me by now, but yes, I live in Millbrae with my husband and baby, and like the other family, young families who already spoke, we want to stay. But what I, what they didn't already emphasize enough, I think, is that future generations of Millbrae residents, which, thank you for your concern for future generations of Millbrae residents, but what we need is not an extra lane of traffic or an extra parking lot, what we need is places to live and vibrant shopping areas, and all these wonderful things that we can get to without cars, which is how we live. I didn't bring the numbers because I didn't realize we were talking about that, per se, but I think we all know that my generation is buying cars at a rate that the rest of you find astonishingly small. We're choosing a different life, and by moving forward with this, you are helping build the future here. And likewise, I think that the concerns about whether or not the hotel might get delayed and things like this, the developer doesn't want to shoot themselves in the foot here. I've seen their thing in Fruitvale, it's wonderful, I have a bunch of friends who live at that one, it's great. So let's just let them do their job rather than worrying that they're gonna fuck it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, next speaker, Stefan Yu, followed by Speaker Warren Wen.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name's Steve Vea. I'm a tax-paying, property tax-paying resident of Millbrae and a US Army veteran. I'm not gonna say what I wrote down. I'm not gonna say what I wrote down here, but I think that, uh, we've seen all kinds of facts and figures, but I think what this project boils down to, you have all the numbers and you have all the, the legal and the details and the planning and the thinking, you have all you need. Right now, it just boils down to values and principles. What is a principle? People need places to live, veterans need, uh, care. Think about values, think about principles, that's what it boils down to at this point.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Warren Nguyen, and followed by Louis Padilla.
Hello, Captain Janus, um, I'm Warren Nguyen, I am a resident of Millbrae for 14 years. I am deeply concerned about the current proposed plan to develop the highly prized BART area. Please do not put mediocre motel in's we already have. Housing assistance for veterans is job with the federal government, which can provide similar vouchers like Section 8, so veterans can live wherever they please. Please do not put the burden on this local city and private sector in term of subsidy, but this is not the biggest problem with the plan. I love this great city, its location is second to none compared to all cities in Northern California. It's proximity to SF4, one of the busiest airports in USA, give us opportunity like no other city has. This is heart of traveling in and out of San Francisco and Silicon Valley. A lot of the tourists comes from China, one of the most economic vibrant place of any major economies in the world. They spend and spend in luxury items like Gucci, LV, just not here in Millbrae. They went in our way to Union Square, to Livermore Premium House, taking transit from right under our nose. Wouldn't it be nice that they spend a chunk of, uh, by our city? Tax revenue will benefit our great Millbrae residents who I love. I love my neighbors, and I think they deserve to have the best. The attractive high-end hotel and restaurants of world-class is the way to enhance Millbrae economic base. My vision for the city has been nothing less than attractive high-end retail hotel that's have a positive impact to our residents' lives. We cannot rush to make decision that we regret next 50 to 100 years. This location has to be adaptive with the future needs, including high-speed rail expansion. It is harder to demolish residential than commercial. Our vision is to have our children and great-grandchildren who will thank us for what we do today. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next, Louis Padilla is up, and we have, uh, Austin Coulter following.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Louis Padilla, I'm the coordinator for Veteran Services at the College of San Mateo, and I would like just to recognize, uh, fellow students that are veterans from the College of San Mateo, Cuyahoga College, and, uh, Skyline College, if you mind standing up. A lot of these veterans, uh, including myself, we came back from Iraq, Afghanistan, the Middle East, and, uh, a lot of us are in between our early twenties, mid twenties, coming back to school, and, uh, for us, once we leave, get deployed, our life pauses, uh, even though for us, it pauses, although, uh, you know, for everything else, it doesn't pause. So, when we come back, we see life kind of escaping our grasp in a way, and a lot of it has to do with housing, the financial situation where things are getting very, very expensive. And as the coordinator for Veteran Services, uh, I'm happy to work with veterans to fulfill their academic goals in addition to their professional goals, and I think one foundation that we have, including with our fellow veterans from, um, Vietnam and other conflicts, is that housing is incredibly important. We talked about financial aspects and numbers and things like that, but I think the most important thing is to have our veterans come back, have a solid, uh, foundation for housing, and to allow them to participate in the, in the economy that we have here in the Bay Area. A lot of our veterans do study math, technology, computers, and things like that, so it'd be a shame in the Bay Area, out of all places, that is the most techni- technologically advanced places in the world, uh, to not have our veterans access that sort of economy. So, I like, thank, thank you for your time, and, uh, yeah, just to approve and support this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Austin Coulter, followed by Justin and Jared. Hmm, huh, okay.
Good evening, Millbrae Planning Commission and staff. My name's Austin Coulter, uh, I was here at the last meeting. Millbrae native, Marine Corps combat veteran, current Millbrae resident. Again, I'm here to, uh, support this project, I'm, I should be working on finals, but I'm here, and I'm happy to be here because this project is incredibly important. Uh, a lot of the issues as far as veterans have already been brought up by a number of veterans that I've worked with before. And I, I just want to, again, press my support for this project, not only as a veteran, but as a Millbrae resident. I'm very thankful to the staff for their recommendation, which I do, again, hope that the Planning Commission recommends to the city council. But I did want to make two points. One, uh, veterans are not a liability, they're an asset. We... As we just mentioned, a lot of these veterans, including myself, are going to school for great jobs, engineering, math, science, technology. Myself, I'm an artist, but whatever. These, these people that we're supporting, especially through school, are going to be our high earners and our CEOs of the future, and those, and we want those people to be coming out of Millbrae. To another point, at the last meeting, uh, we had a few people express concern over the veterans' building being, um, tucked in the corner, and I completely understand on the surface how that could, that could appear to be an issue, but, um, a part of my own research and talking to affordable housing advocates and other veterans, I absolutely support that idea.
Your time is up now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin and Jared, uh, followed... I'm sorry? Oh, okay. And our final speaker's slip.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, can I interrupt really quick? I, I was just wondering, because the last speaker was saying something about the research regarding the separate VA building, and I'd kind of like to hear if that's okay, if I can hear him just finish up really quick, just because he said I did a lot of research and, and in support of it, so if, if it's okay with...
Sure.
I would, if you can keep it, sure, just because I, I wanted to hear what you were gonna say. Thank you, sorry.
Very brief and to the point.
I will keep it very brief. Essentially, it breaks down to, uh, having the unit separate allows us to have more affordable housing, uh, 5% more than what's even required. And as a part of veterans' issues, having a core group, um, a centralized location for veterans to give each other support is always beneficial, and that's something that the VA supports, that's something that student, uh, veteran student organization support, and that is why I look past the tucked in a corner and see that as a positive, uh, aspect.
Thank you. And our, our final public speaker is Chris Del Negro.
All right, so I'm a Millbrae resident, um, I have a couple questions, I guess, more than anything else. Mentioned the decreased parking, um, I want to make sure that we, of course, worry about how that's going to affect the drop-off and pickup on the other side of the train tracks from residents no longer going down to BART to park, but taking other alternative transportations. Obviously, there's going to be a bigger impact on the California Drive side with the extension area, and I hope you'd be conscious of that, that's one statement. I wanted to clarify, I don't really understand about the occupancy tax for the hotel, I understand that the hotel is a long-term residency hotel, and that the property taxes are lower for that, um, I've heard that, I'm not sure if that's true. In addition, the, um, real estate transfer tax that was mentioned as a potential piece for, um, generate underestimated tax revenue, I'm unaware if any property is changing hands as far as real estate transfers, I don't really understand how that would generate income. Also, clarification of the bike access and mitigations there, um, wasn't very clear to me what was being done to mitigate the, the bike access to and from, and I'm very curious to hear more about what is the shortest and most direct route from TOD 2 to downtown Millbrae, for example, to the corner of Victoria and, and Broadway? How's, the fastest way you're gonna get to that, that location by bike or by pedestrian from the TOD development? And last minute, uh, point is, I, while I'm a big fan of the affordable housing, and I'm a really big fan of the veterans' housing, I recently lost a friend as a veteran, served 25 years, um, and he passed away in September, and I know that he went through the difficulty of coming back and finding a way of life after he returned, and I'm so very conscious of that. So, I'm very much a for, uh, for that housing, but I know that he did experience a system of segregation from reincorporation into our society, and that's why it concerns me that we are putting him off into the corner, that we are creating what I would call probably in the long term, the barracks in the corner, and I find that to be still kind of a sad thing. I understand something's better than nothing, but I'd like to see something better.
Thank you. Now, uh, I guess what we, we need is, uh, the applicant, oh. Okay. My arch-chol Piatri.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As I was sitting, listening to the speakers, and especially the veterans, I wanted to point something out, is that there were some comments being back and forth on social media about non-so, if you put the veterans in a separate building, uh, it takes away socialization and integration. When I looked at the project to see the, the layout of it, the veterans are very welcome to come out of that building and socialize with anybody and everybody they wish, they share in mutual amenities in the project, and, um, I think that it's something that we need to be, you know, in favor of promoting. They're not going to be treated any differently, the building that's going to be for them is going to be the same upper-class building that's going to be for people who live in the condominiums, and so there would be, you know, such high quality of life and living quarters for them. Another thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, a few years ago, when I was on the council, and I looked at the, um, website for Republic Urban, and went down to San Jose to look at some of the projects that they work on, um, I was very, very impressed with finding, and also, uh, when they had a little open house down at the BART station, there was information given out that within the Republic best practices, that they have a special section dedicated to the promise of housing for veterans. So, when people think that they're not gonna build that, you know, with any import, that is not true, that is built into their best practices manual. And another thing with regard to Republic, and I saw some eyes roll when the question and, you know, was asked, well, they're getting a charitable donation, uh, what I want to say is, in the beginning, when that, when our community center burned down, Republic Urban stepped up immediately and gave, I believe it was thirty-thousand-dollar check to contribute to the rebuild of the planning of the new community center. These people have integrity, and I don't think BART would have employed them if they didn't, because BART is very integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, now, does the applicant have any rebuttal comments on... I will, well, this is sort of public too. It's responding to that.
I'll be brief. Couple things, one, uh, Ms. Calapriatro, thank you for your comments, I, quite frankly, we forgot, I forgot that we had made that donation. Want to comment a little bit on the overall project site plan. There is no part of this project that's isolated. Again, we've hired the best architects in the Bay Area, maybe in the country, to design this project, and as said, uh, that affordable housing unit, which will be shared by veterans and other Millbrae citizens, is 600 feet away from transit. It's, uh, probably 100 feet away from the retail. It's, uh, it shares in all the publicly accessible open space that's been built out there, it'll share in all the public art, it'll share in all aspects of the project. The other thing to keep in mind is, we had the affordable housing in a different location until staff recommended that the hotel be moved out to the southern end of the project, and the affordable be moved to the northern end of the project. Just another comment on freestanding or standalone affordable housing, it does, uh, everybody's touched on this, it does a number of things. We're able to do more units, we're able to finance it, um, it, we're able to provide services specific for the occupants in that project, and it creates a, we're able to do, uh, 20 more or 5% more than we could if we did it anywhere else. We're also exceeding the specific plan requirements, we're in the specific plan, you allow 5% moderate affordable housing, which equates to rental around three to thirty-five-hundred dollars a month. We're not doing one single affordable housing, uh, moderate housing unit. Again, we have all our experts here, I do want to stress that, uh, perfect projects never get built. Projects with conditions to, uh, put on by your expert staff, your attorneys, with what you have here before, give this chance, give this project the best chance of being successful, the best chance of being, uh, being constructed right away. We're ready to go, overburdening the project with conditions, uh, like eliminating a TCO, this TCO condition will stop the project. Other than that, uh, thank you very much for your time, everybody here in the audience that spent all your time, uh, your, your free time here to come and support this project, we really appreciate it. I've never worked on a project, and I've been around for a little while, I've never worked on a project where I've had so much support. I'm usually in these rooms where there's a lot of people, there's a lot of opposition. I don't see any here, I think we're all ready to go and move forward, so we hope you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, Commissioner Quigg?
I had a quick question of Mr. Marty, if that's okay. I understand the units are gonna be rented?
Yes.
So, where does the transfer tax come in?
The...
When you sell buildings, they're subject to a transfer tax.
What buildings?
I'll let Mr. Connor address this.
Well, I know, I, I know that what a transfer tax is, but if this is a rental unit and the...
Well, if an office building is sold, if a hotel building is sold, if a retail...
Right, but that's the first time.
Every time.
Every time. But we haven't calculated, because we didn't want to...
But not for the units, and these are not condominiums, is that correct?
Individual units will not be sold, if that's your question. If, if the market rate is sold, there's 321 units in this market rate project.
Okay.
The whole building would be sold, and the transfer tax would be on the whole building, but not individual units, if that's your question.
That's my question, and the office is also, the office building, it's not individual, or are they gonna be condominiums?
At this point, there's no plan to condominiumize it, it's one parcel right now.
The, um, all of the buildings are one parcel, I mean, one, two, three, four.
Correct.
So, there's four parcels.
Or one parcel for each building, yes, correct.
Okay, I have one other question for you, um, and I think it's wonderful, all the veterans are here, um, and it seems like it's been called the Veterans Building, but there are 50 or 55 that would be attributed to veterans, and then there's still a certain percentage that are gonna be, quotes, rented to any, is that correct? So, I mean, we've kind of all said, uh, it's all for veterans, but that's not what I understood.
It's majority veterans, I believe in the development agreement, there's a preference for Millbrae citizens. Is that correct, Mr. Connor? Yes.
So, it, it's, it's, it's a low, very low affordable housing, right?
Just low.
Low? I thought I heard very low, it's something. Okay, I did hear... I did hear very low at one point, but, okay.
Okay.
That's my question.
Could I pick you back on that?
So the transfer tax only happens when one of the big parcels sells?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I may pick you back on that question, Mr. Arati. Could I pick you back on that question a little bit? Mr. Arati, so I'm trying to get a little bit clearer understanding. Obviously, the apartments are going to be rented and not going to be for sale, as you said.
Yes.
So what property transfer do you expect to happen in this whole thing?
Right now, I don't anticipate transfer, but projects do sometimes get sold, but our typical plan with our company is build and hold and manage long-term. Woodmont Management Company, which is located in San Carlos, essentially manages all of our apartment buildings and our retail, and that's the business plan right now.
So the... You know, upon the completion of the project, who would be the property owner? It's not going to be BART, or it's going to be somebody else?
BART's... The... BART will be leasing the ground to us. Republic or a LLC entity with Republic involved will own each of the parcels, with the exception of the Marriott Residence Inn. Actually, that'll be... BART's leasing the ground to us. The Marriott Residence Inn deal is we'll do a sublease to Marriott Residence Inn, and they'll build on top of that. But in essence, we're the owner. We're the... We're the lessee. BART is the lessor.
Right. Correct. So it's lease land from BART?
Correct.
To the Republic Urban list of LLC companies?
Correct.
And so there's no expected real estate transfer exist?
Well, not now, but ground lease parcels do sell. I mean, we have a 100-year ground lease. I mean, theoretically, somebody could purchase it and just like they purchase a piece of land. Not our plan.
So theoretically, somebody could purchase the lease but not purchase the property. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Right.
So there's no transfer tax either?
I don't know how the assessor values that, quite frankly.
The buildings...
Why don't you?
I'm trying to get to the...
First of all, the point I was making, we didn't include... I regret making... I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a mole here. There were certain tax revenue sources that you collect that we didn't bother to try to estimate, partly because it's hard to know, is the building going to sell every seven years? Is it going to sell every 10 years? Real estate companies, even long-term holders, sell their properties over a course of 100 years. If a building is sold, irrespective of a ground lease, there's a transfer tax, as I understand it. We just didn't want to get so fancy and predict, if they hold it for 20 years, that's not... That's going to be different than if they hold it for seven. We just were merely... I was just merely pointing out, in response to the claim that we were overstating revenues and understating costs, that we've made an effort to understate revenues by excluding things that other consultants and we in the past have included, including costs that aren't presently costs. But yes, if they sell properties, meaning the buildings and the associated leaseholds, Milbury's going to get a tax revenue from it.
But according to Mr. Arati, if I can get a confirmation from you, there's no intent of selling it currently, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that all the questions we have?
I believe one of our speakers asked about clarification for the hotel occupancy tax, too. I think that... I was just curious if we can have a little bit of clarification or...
Okay.
Just to address the question.
Because it's a residence inn, it doesn't matter whether it's called a resident inn or anything else. Once somebody has occupied a hotel room for 30 days, they then become a tenant, and they don't pay TOD. So whether it's a resident inn or any kind of hotel, longer-term occupancy that basically terminates the payment of TOD.
I have one comment on that. Your specific plan prevents that from occurring. Right. I mean, there is a provision... This was discussed during the EIR process and the specific plan process, and there's a provision to prevent that.
So the land use doesn't allow tenancies longer than 30 days for it to be a hotel?
Okay.
Right.
So it wouldn't apply? It's always going to be a transient occupancy tax, right?
Always correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we take five minutes and then after that?
I'm sorry? Oh, sure. We'll take a five-minute break now and...
I'm sorry. Can we... The speaker had... I mean, one of the speakers also had a question about bike circulation from the TOD to downtown, so I thought that would be good to at least answer that question.
Okay.
If the staff... I think it's the staff that would answer that question. One of the speakers asked about bike circulation from this project to Victoria, how that would work, or what would be the shortest way, or how that connects with the rest of Milbury. So if we could maybe just address that.
I think you showed us.
Yeah, I remember seeing... But that's more just the project, and it's probably more specific plan.
So, of course, the BART tracks are an issue. So cyclists would have to go up over the Milbury overpass to El Camino Real. The other choice would be to go along Aviador and then through the community over that way, or walk their bike through the BART station. I mean, the railway tracks are an access-limiting factor. Does that kind of answer the questions in terms of cyclists?
Yeah. Again, it was one of the people asked about that, so I thought it would be good to clarify.
So that's one of the reasons why I don't think he was here for the presentation.
It wasn't clear.
Yeah. Just to have it clear, as clear as possible, so everyone is aware.
Again, with the tracks, you can cross the overpass, you can go through the BART station, or you would go along Aviador and then through the neighborhood, and then probably if you wanted to get to Victoria, then maybe have to come back.
Have to come back.
If you wanted to go on to the downtown, then you could go on to the downtown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll take a five-minute break and resume afterwards.
Okay. Okay, could we please, uh, sit down and... We're ready to start the meeting again.
There should be one in the drawer.
Oh, we found it. Okay, back with our meeting session. Next, uh... We invite comments from the commissioners regarding the four areas that we have for recommendation to the city council before us. Passing the ordinance on development agreement, the adopting a resolution on the site development plan, and the resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow the commercial lodging, and the resolution approving tentative subdivision map to allow merger of the existing parcels. Okay, uh, do we have any comments or even motions?
I have one comment.
Yes, Commissioner Quigg.
This evening, when we got here, we received this request for changes. It's part of the, um... Yeah, the conditions of approval, so I didn't know if we wanted to look at this individually, like maybe before we start moving forward.
Have you some comments on these? Excellent, go ahead.
I would think we should go over it, since this applicant has made these comments to the conditions of approval.
Well, how about if we just ask why the change was asked for, and then why did... Only on the no's that staff said no, why no? I mean, we give them super brief answers on both sides. Can we just get a quick onesie from one side and the other side, just so we know what we should do here? And my biggest question is to the applicants, are any of these a deal breaker?
But I would concur that it would be... I would like to know what the applicant thinks in terms of... Because the staff has already said, given their response, so...
A little response.
Right, with a little bit of response, so...
Yeah, so again, we're recommending and support of all except four, or three, I think. On the design review, the public art, I think, is an important component of design review. It could be part of a building facade, it could be street furnishings, it could be a fountain. Delaying it to the building permit means there's no public oversight, just staff would look at it in conjunction with moving forward. Although, there's some discussion here about the art coming back as a standalone item. I still think that it should be looked at at the design review, at least some idea. Maybe you don't have the exact design of the fountain, or the wall mural, or the whatever, but we should have some notion as we're moving forward, what it's going to look like, where it's going to be. So our recommendation is not to defer. Similarly, with the master sign program, we don't need to know exactly the signage, but as part of thinking through the building, what parts of the building, is there signage that's going to be mounted on the roof? Is it going to be projecting signage? There should be a master sign program that looks at where the signs go, and this is the opportunity for them to ask for larger signs and to lay it out. And it really does need to be done in conjunction with the buildings, and for that, we say, we suggest that that not be deferred. On the recycled water line, again, this is a significant project with significant water use. We think that the... Simply paying their fair share and expecting the city to find the resources and put it together is kind of the wrong way around. So again, our recommendation is we keep the condition with them being responsible for completing that. The, um... Other one is, has to do with the recycling of construction debris, and...
And Colette, I can speak to that. The cities conducts the recycling programs in accordance with AB 939, and that's a state law which requires all California cities to reduce the amount of garbage placed in landfills. And this is a standard condition of approval that is applied to every application, and for consistency's sake, and for AB 939. This is something that we feel should be kept in place.
We cannot, um... We have to... Do the recycling as stated, and I really feel the recycled water program is extremely important. I also feel that a master sign program is mandatory on all of our projects, so I don't see why we would have to, um, not do it on this one, and...
He's not... Again, I want to be clear, it's not a request to be relieved of that requirement, they would just like to defer it so they could go forward and get the approval of the building, and know that that's settled, and defer this, because putting together a sign program is, you know, one more thing they'd have to do before they could move forward with construction drawings. So that's their request. And I do understand why of it, but we've indicated why we think they need to be looked at together. I also wanted to clarify in response to the question about TOT, what I said is generally true, but there's specific language, both in the specific plan and in the development agreement, that limits stays in this hotel to less than 30 days. So the issue of staying there and then, you know, somebody who has to be in town for 35 days, and there'd be five days we wouldn't get TOT, that wouldn't be the case, because of the conditions of the description of the use in the specific plan and in the DA.
Yes.
That brings up another question, what happens if somebody's going to be there for 35 days? They just, it just continues to add up, the TOT. I mean, what if somebody comes in... I mean, residence ends are for like a short-term rental, so if somebody is going to come in, and they say, "Well, we're going to be here for three weeks," and then all of a sudden, say, their job makes them stay on, and they're here for 45 days. How is that handled?
I've seen it hotels make you move out for a night and come back.
Okay.
But they're being violation of the land use if they allowed someone to rent for 40...
Okay.
I guess if they kept paying TOT, the city might not, you know, care, but if the TOT drops because they're letting people, it'd be pretty clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can we hear from the applicant in terms of what, if they, what their thoughts are on this, or what their objections are?
Sure. Number one, I appreciate staff's flexibility on these asks. You know, there are a lot that are acceptable to them and are acceptable to us. Let's talk about the public art design review. I think Ms. Moonier characterized it exactly correct. Anything we have on a building, a bench, a fountain, that's part of a, something that's going to be constructed right away, I think we can show that to you right away, and at least, if not exactly, the concept. If we have a location in the project, which I think we have a couple, and you'll see this all at design review anyways, it's out in the middle of the project, and it's a freestanding piece of public art, we'd want a little time for that. We could present what the concept would be, we could get feedback from you, but I think anything on the building and the benches and that sort of stuff, our landscape architect has already designed it, so we can meet that condition. So with that statement, I'm okay with the no, if that's, if that's staff's concept of what's going to happen. On the, uh, on the master sign plan, the no, that's fine. We'll present you with concepts or the actual plan, so the design review board, so the design review board can act. The recycled water line, I think we need a little work on that. We don't think it's, uh, we still need to work on that, I think that's something we can do between your recommendation and the city council. Again, there, we believe it's, it may already be there, number one. Number two, we don't think it's fair that we install a line underneath the freeway that goes to your plant, and we burden the entire, entire cost. Either you have a shot at the specific plan level, to at least hit everybody in the specific plan area and make them pay for it, you may have a citywide opportunity too, but that line benefits everybody in the city. And right now, I don't think the city knows how much it's going to cost, when it's going to be built, when it's going to be hooked up. So we are okay with paying our reasonable fair share. So, um, the other one, the recycling issue, will conform. The last one is acceptable to staff, so those are my comments, brief. And again, to answer your question, I don't think any of these are deal killers, and I think we can continue to work on these like we did from the 16th to now, to solve them all, especially with the way staff's attitude, I think our attitude, we're all, kind of, we're almost at the one-yard line, we're very anxious to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can, so if I may through the chair, so it seems like three of the four are already good, and then it's just the sewer, the water line. As it is written right now, it says that, it doesn't say who's paying for it, right? Is that, am I reading that correctly, so...
If you look at attached, or exhibit five, condition number 18, it's in the tentative map approval. And I would also like to, um, Cyrus is here, he's been, he was the interim public works director, and he's been continuing and participating in this project. We also have information that we're working on refining, that part of the, um, water line, the conduit, is already in place, and so this condition makes reference to that, that connection to the city water sign through an existing steel casing pipe, it has to be completed prior to final occupancy.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, in working with the applicants, we have been able to identify a set of plans that indicates an existing casing pipe. Essentially, there's a host pipe that crosses Highway 101, and gets to the east side of Highway 101, and that pipe can essentially take care of the most expensive part of crossing Highway 101, because the host pipe exists. We've also been able to identify an existing eight-inch water pipe that is dry at this point, that has been constructed from, if you will, west of Highway 101, all the way to the intersection of Rollins and Millbrae. We think that pipe exists, and if we can have the applicant essentially make the connection from east of 101 to west of 101, through that existing casing pipe, it will provide certainly a benefit to the community as a whole by bringing recycled water pipe from one side of the freeway to the other side of freeway, and ultimately connecting to the rest of the specific plan area. So essentially, the cost of, the major cost of crossing, which is crossing Highway 101, the casing pipe seems to be existing, so essentially, it's running a new pipe through an existing pipe that was constructed a while ago, that will complete that connection. And therefore, we think that, you know, that that should be something that the project would do. However, the staff is amenable to working on a reimbursement agreement to make sure that whoever in the future uses that recycled water pipe will reimburse the development for their appropriate share of the use.
I'm sorry, so you're saying crossing the freeway 101 to west to east, east to west is already there?
There is a pipe that was constructed, I think, in early 2000, in anticipation of recycled water pipe to get across Highway 101. There's also an existing pipe that is not in use, but was constructed specifically for future recycled water, that goes from where the ramps are for Highway 101, for the South One Highway 101, to Rollins and Millbrae. And those are, that pipe actually is shown on the tentative map that was submitted to the city. So essentially...
So it's already there, but you're asking to add?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not catching what...
In order to cross freeways or highway, essentially, Caltrans requires you to have a host pipe, which is typically a steel pipe. Traditionally, it's been a Boeran Jack, where you basically get, put a steel pipe, and then you run a new pipe inside that steel pipe.
Got it.
So you have the host pipe, and you have the actual pipe. We have the host pipe actually existing across Highway 101. So essentially, it's running the recycled water pipe to that host pipe along Highway 101 that needs to be completed, and if that pipe is connected to the remaining infrastructure in place, we would have the ability to bring recycled water from the plant all the way down to the specific plan area. So that's, that's why we're requesting the applicant to complete that work, with the understanding that reimbursement will be feasible as an option for the applicant to get reimbursed for benefits provided to the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Do we have an expectation on cost of bringing the actual purple pipe from west of 101 to the east of 101? Because that's the cost we're asking the applicant to bear, right?
Correct, it's essentially running a pipe inside the host pipe.
Don't have a cost.
Do we have a cost estimate for that work?
I do not, but I mean, essentially, I think the freeway is about 250 feet wide, and you know, if you estimate, I don't know, $500 a foot for running that pipe, you know, that's, that's about $125,000. But I'm just totally guessing at this point, and we need to put an estimate together for that.
I mean, it is true that we are asking the applicant to do something for the city that, not necessarily specifically for this project, so...
No, the conditions of the project require...
Okay.
That the projects in the specific plan area must reuse recycled water. And again, there is also the issue that, if you look in your SEQA findings, you have to make significant findings of overriding consideration on utilities, that we do not have sufficient water for single dry years after 2020, or 2025, and we do not have enough water in dry years, multiple dry years. So one of the things that the use of recycled water is, it reduces demand, and while we're focusing on, you know, landscaping is the obvious one, it can be used for other things, including toilets in, in office buildings, or in residences. I believe the building code allows it in condominiums, but not in rental, and right now, we're looking, this would be a rental project, but the code may change. So again, yes, but again, the other thing is, is that this, we need a project that is of a sufficient scale to be able to afford that. For the city to find the funds and to do the design work and do all of that, would take a much longer, a longer time. So it is an important component, and it's part of offsetting impacts from the project, such as water demand, and it is, again, there is, there are specific policies in the specific plan that require recycled water for irrigation.
Another question. That brings to mind, is it, because I thought that on new construction, I've heard that you do need to use recycled water for landscaping?
Well, during droughts, when we had the droughts, many places would not let potable water be used for site watering and stuff for dust control, but yes, the focus is on irrigation, that you would use recycled water for irrigation throughout the development.
The project, yeah. I have heard too, that some of the cities, or I've heard, or maybe it's going to start where they are going to be using it for toilets and stuff.
I've worked on two projects recently, one's a condominium, one's a rental, and in both of those cases, the toilets, the toilets in the individual units are using, they're double-plumb, and they will be using recycled water.
And that's very, yeah, but we're not requiring it, right?
We're not requiring it, but the recycled water, and again, there's also the issue we have to look at, which is, we need, the plant needs to get ready to provide it, and then there will be a certain maximum volume that they can provide, so we have to also pay attention to those kinds of things. It's part of what we're working out.
This was just a question.
I think I have a response if you, that'll help, I believe. Given Cyrus's testimony and not holding to any dollar amount, if this improvement ranges in his estimate, we're willing, we're willing to front that cost, and we would look, we'd work with your staff as a community benefit, and work on a reimbursement agreement, that as projects came in, we would get reimbursed, we would just want to make sure that the cost was reasonable, and we had a chance to look at it when it came in, but I think we can move, with that modification of condition, we're fine with it and can move forward.
Okay. Any other comments over here?
Not at this, I'm fine with this.
Everybody happy on...
Yeah, no, definitely.
Okay, well, at this point, we should be looking at our recommendations to the city council. One of them is tentative subdivision map for the six parcels, which is four development parcels, plus the, uh, existing bar, station and garage, and the surface parking lot on the northeast corner. So what we, I guess what we do, and that would be just an application, or a recommendation to the city council to approve that tentative subdivision map.
Are we not...
I would suggest taking them in the order that, in terms of, if you think you're going to get all the way through them, first look at SEQA, because you have to make, before you take action, then the development agreement. But again, you can discuss them in any order, but when you come to vote, I would encourage you to do that, but you could pick, maybe the site development plan is one of the more complex ones with the most, many of the provisions that have been under discussion.
Okay, well, do you have any comments, starting with SEQA then?
No.
No? Okay, so, that apparently is an area that we would approve right away. Next...
They're waving the sign for the mic, so I'm not sure who...
I'm sorry.
They're waving the sign for the mic, I'm not sure, maybe they can't hear you so well, or...
Oh, okay, he's okay. Okay, next, looking at the site development plan for approval. Do we have any comments on that? No? Any over here?
Where does the, this-
Don't forget the development agreement.
We're at the development agreement. We're going in order, are we, we're going in order of these?
Just clarify, there's one, you'll adopt one resolution. What we're doing is just going through the five sub portions of that and seeing if there's any issues with those, but then you'll take one vote.
Right. Okay. So do we have any issues with the site development plan that we wanted to discuss? Okay. The next one we would recommend to the city council would be an ordinance approving the development agreement that provides benefits to the developer, including the development intensity and development at less than minimum allowed density for the hotel site in exchange for community benefits, which include affordable housing and a provision of more than 10% publicly accessible open space on the project's site. Anybody want to comment on that or make a motion?
Does it include the developer agreement content itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like it does, yes.
Okay. Yes, I do.
I do as well. I know Commissioner Quigg does as well.
You would approve that?
No, we, we have questions. We haven't discussed it, so.
Well, yeah, we have to discuss. I think there's a lot of discussion to be had within the DA content.
Let's go for it.
Okay.
Open up that discussion.
So I, I think the first question, I, I'd like to bring the applicant on the podium if you can, Mr. Arati. On the six B site, which is the hotel site, there is a FAR target of, currently, your proposal is below the FAR target. Is there any possibility that you can bring that into compliance?
I mean, you could, but you, you affect the publicly accessible open space. In essence, we could, but it's, I think your staff has recommended there's enough community benefits, we don't need to do that, and that's a position we'd like to stick with. You've got 164 units there, rooms. It's at its maximum height width and depth for the project. That's all we can do. And we think it's a, it's a small variation to what you approved with TOD number one. TOD number one, you gave a lot more than what we're getting here. It's a slight variation. And again, staff has recommended to, to, the community benefits are good enough that they're waiving that. That's a position we want to stick with.
Okay. So, and I want to bring it back to the TCO discussion a little bit. Could you, you mentioned that the TCO is essential for you in order to secure the construction loan?
Yes.
And it's a deal breaker for you?
Yes.
Could you go into a little bit more in terms of elaborate that, so that we can understand it?
Our discussions with construction lenders, if that condition was on that you're asking, they would not lend us money to do a construction loan. So we have no project. We couldn't start the project. Again, your hammer that Mr. Conneran and your staff have negotiated is that we couldn't get a final occupancy permit if we didn't fulfill our requirements, and we would put $115 million construction loan in default, and we couldn't get permanent financing. It's a big, big hammer. And then there's also provisions in the DA as to the timing of the $3.8 million, it could be an additional hammer. But the way the, the way the DA is structured now, I think it's fair. It allows us to finance and get the project started. If you start adding more layers of restrictions on it, it's going to be very difficult for us to get this project going. What's been negotiated has been negotiated by your best professionals over years. There have been lots of back and forth, and this is something we can live with and we can get the project started. We think it's a fair and reasonable hammer.
So I, I want to understand how you intend to deal with the project schedule, because the, the TCO basically is giving you the temporary occupancy, right?
Correct.
For the market rate housing.
Correct.
So presumably, if you proceed the project as we expect you to, the hotel will come up first, and then the retail, and then the affordable housing units. And then the last one to be, to be completed would be the market rate housing.
Question? Is that a question?
Right. So if, if, if that, if that's the order at which these things are completed, then the temporary occupancy permit wouldn't necessarily be an issue or even needed. And so, and if you do need it, when and how do you intend to use it?
Maybe you can just describe the sequence at which you planned it.
That's what I was going to do, yeah. The development agreement calls for the first phase construction to include all the site work for the project, for the hotel, for the market rate housing, for the office building, and the affordable housing. That's, so when we start this project, we're roughly going to have $3 million of our own equity and money into the affordable housing right when we start. That's at risk. So if we don't finish it, we're going to, that's a penalty also. We have to start the affordable housing within 36 months of the start of the market rate housing, or this penalty will occur. You are correct that if all goes well, it's probably about 30 months to build the affordable housing, uh, to the market rate housing. It's probably, it's, it's less time to build the affordable housing, but we need that flexibility to obtain our financing, work with CORE, give us, give us room to be able to line our six or seven layers of financing up and deliver that affordable. That's the way, that's the way this is structured. And the penalty occurs if we, if we don't start, then the penalty occurs on the market rate housing. So theoretically, if I want to play this out, theoretically, in 30 months, we've finished the market rate housing. Six months later, we haven't started the affordable. You can put us in default, withhold our final CFO, stop us from, put us in default of our construction loan of $115 million, and not, nobody will lend us, nobody will give us a permanent loan if we're in default of the development agreement for the affordable housing. Again, that's a hammer, that's a timing, that's a logic behind the process.
I, I think it might be helpful at some point, I mean, I know putting everything together is a lot of work, but I think it would be nice to have everything kind of-
See it around those-
See it, yeah, exactly. Have the timeline.
See the-
Exactly. So, I mean, I, I'm fine, I'm not saying that we have to have it, but I, I think definitely it would be helpful if, if, you know, if we do move forward to city council, just to kind of get a visual of what, what all of this, you know, the timing here, what's at risk. Personally, I'll just put in, I, I don't have an issue with the temporary occupancy. I, I think that makes sense to me. I don't, I don't see why developer would start a project, spend a lot of money, and then just decide not to do anything. So I, I, I think, I, you know, and, and getting the support of veterans, getting the support of the community, and if they don't do it, I mean, there is a financial, hopefully, it seems like there is a financial aspect to this. There's also a community relations aspect to it, because we are being very highly publicized, and I, I would think that that would be a very foolish move on a developer to, I'm not saying everybody will or will not do it, but so far from what I'm hearing, it just doesn't seem like we need to be, put an unreasonable burden on, on the developer. So that's my, personally, I, that's where I'm at.
I think from here to council meeting, we can work that out. And quite frankly, I misspoke. The timelines are a little more stringent. We have to start the construction drawings for the affordable housing within four months after the effective date of the DA. We have to complete the affordable housing within 36 months after the start of the market rate housing. So it is a little tighter timeframe than I described. And again, I think if your recommendation is do a, an exhibit that outlines that a little better for the city council, we'll do that. I think it's a great idea, and we can do that.
Hey, Commissioner Quigg? Yeah, Commissioner Quigg, you were going to-
Yeah, I just, they were, they were talking.
Sorry. Just to note that Exhibit B does have, that has the timeline. I know it's not, you know, we, we actually went from a-
No, I see the timeline here in writing. I'm just saying it would be helpful to just kind of have a, you know, the bar and the affordable, and, you know, we've done that for other timelines before, and I just feel like that would be very helpful for those of us, for just me, for me, somebody like-
We're happy to do that, and I, I read things in bar graphs sometimes better than in writing all the time.
Right. It just kind of gives you that picture upfront, so.
We actually worked from one to do this, but the one we got from them had so many lines on it, it was-
That's-
It had everything they're doing. So, you know, we weren't able to get one that was sort of skinny down.
That's a really good point.
Probably not a bad idea. Maybe, maybe, maybe we've convinced them it's a good thing.
That would be helpful, because I was reading A, B, C, D, E, and I was trying to visualize all these months and thinking, how does it really, you know?
We do this every day, and it's sometimes confusing to us, so.
I just, you know, maybe they could come together with some kind of condition, instead of saying temporary occupancy, maybe allowing the commercial to go and, and get that marketed.
We can't do that.
Well, I'm only one.
I understand.
And we don't even have final say on this.
Sure. I'm just trying to be very transparent.
But I can just say, I've seen a lot of projects, it's not my first project here in Millbrae. I've seen a lot of projects throughout all of San Francisco, and, and I've seen a lot that go a long way, and then they don't finish. So, like I say, I'm only one person.
Sure.
And, and it always has bothered me, but, and I, I've seen it. Not that you would do it, but-
Thank you. I'm sorry you interrupted.
Okay. Commissioner Quigg?
Yeah, so, and also, I want to talk a little bit about the $2.88 million of fee reduction that you're seeking from us. Is that correct?
Not a fee reduction, it's a direct, direct contribution, not a fee reduction.
So it's a direct-
They were, they were seeking it, that was correct. They were seeking a fee reduction, essentially, it first came out as a fee reduction with-
Yeah, Mike.
So I just want to clarify that Member Feng was correct that it was originally requested as a fee reduction, however, the recommendation was not for a fee reduction, it's for a cash contribution.
Okay. So it's a cash contribution from the city, from the general fund for $2,880,000 and change. And then in return, you agree to contribute $2 million of charitable donation to the construction of the community center. Just trying to understand that two, you know, $2,880,000 and change. Can you, can you not do this project without having that $2,880,000, or is it something that you can do on your own?
I think perhaps that's something we should, I mean, basically, we're, where this comes from is that CORE, the CORE, CORE companies has proceeded to look for revenue, you know, both loans and grants and runs, and they've made applications to the San Mateo County Housing Fund.
Delay the kick.
Right. And, and as part of that, basically, we're in competition with other requests. Usually, if they've got $10 million, they have $40 million worth of requests for, for money. So in order to be competitive, basically, the county staff has said that we're up against jurisdictions that are making a financial contribution, and in order for us to be competitive in working with CORE, that if we, if the city doesn't have a financial contribution, then we're not going to be as competitive. So the application that was submitted by the CORE companies for, and they have received approval for $1.5 million, included a contribution from the city of $2.88. And again, in the discussions with, with senior city staff, the city manager, we've, that was the, that was the direction, was to include this grant or this, this financial contribution towards it. So we can, so we, we will be able to work with the CORE companies and be competitive for financial subsidy dollars that could come in.
You might want to mention the second-
Second round.
Second round of funding.
Yeah. So it's one point, it's 1.5 that they have received, but they need to go back, their, their funding gap is about $8 million, and so they expect to go back as part of the next, next annual round, and as part of that, having a commitment from the city that we would contribute towards the project. And again, the, the, I believe it's still structured this way, Michael, is that we wouldn't pay that until the building's done and ready for occupancy, and that's the point at which the city would pay the $2.88 million.
We're still, we're still negotiating that point, but the, I, I, so I, I think the, so the idea is that by, you know, it was important to the city administration to be able to help them qualify for this county money, which is a significant, if you look at the county, this would be a significant allocation within the county to create the affordable housing. The county was pretty clear that there had to be a city participation, and had actually, that amount was-
It's a condition.
Was a condition. It was $3.88, but we could, they would be willing to accept $2.88. So that was the basis for the amount of the, that the city offered. I think we're working to clarify the timing of the payment of that, but I think part of, part of this arrangement, and, and one of the reasons it works, is we had previously been locked, locked up in terms of, we want the affordable housing, we can't, they couldn't promise it because they, it would affect, that promise would affect their ability to get financing. But by allowing them to do a, a contribution ahead of time to the community center, makes the city feel that for the significant increase in bone, in density that this whole project is getting, that the city is going to be guaranteed to get something back from that. If this affordable, and the, right, at the beginning, the affordable housing was the only community benefit, the only significant community benefit we were going to get. And we were concerned that if the funding didn't work, and we didn't get, didn't come together, then we didn't get anything, and we had given, you know, a significant, I mean, the city is, is, is making a sacrifice in a way to allow this density. It's a good thing, I think you agree, but, so the, the, this arrangement is helpful because if for some reason they never do the affordable housing, the city at least would have the $2 million. And it, it enables us to get over that hump, or through the, the impasse that we had reached. And so now this would enable us, if, assuming that they get their funding, the city's going to be careful in terms of how that money is, is, is doled out. But by doing it at the end, and we satisfy the county's requirement and the amount that the county required, qualify them, hopefully, that second round, I think, is in pretty good, pretty, pretty good shape to come. And so that would help make it work. So that's, that's the arrangement.
Just to comment on top of that, to make it clear, that $2 million to the charitable contribution to the community center, that's an additional community benefit, above and beyond the affordable housing.
Right.
The affordable housing, we're providing 5% more than what is required, and we are, in order to do that, we're get, we're asking for the $2.88 million from the city. Ms. Janet Stone is here from San Mateo Department of Housing, and she can further confirm where we are in the financing and confirm that the $2.8 is what she needs to move this project along. So again, for that $2.8, you really get 20 extra units of affordable housing that are costing roughly $625,000 a unit, or 12 and a half million. So that's the additional. You get the $2 million for the community center, plus you get the additional affordable housing. And again, Ms. Stone is here if you need further, for, further clarification of how we're qualified and where we are.
So, but is it not true that maybe your BART representative is also here? Isn't it true that there is a mandate by BART that there is a 20% affordable housing unit to be built on site in order for this project to work?
There's no, there's no mandate. When we started this project, there was no affordable housing required for the project. Since, since our acquisition, our, our signing of the exclusive negotiating agreement, BART's policies have moved towards affordable housing, and there is a 20% requirement. We did it voluntarily, but it does, yeah, I'll answer that question. It still is a community benefit above and beyond what's required in the specific plan.
I understand. But it, but the BART still requires 20% affordable housing in order for this site to work, isn't-
Technically, not on this project. I mean, we volunteered to do it at the time. Oh, I'm sorry, Sean? Excuse me.
We adopted our affordable housing policy in January 2016- We adopted our affordable housing policy in January 2016 after this development had already been moving forward. So we worked with the developer. As Kelly and Michael mentioned, they volunteered to step up to the plate to help BART meet what was the spirit or intent of our TOD policy, our affordable housing policy, which sets a baseline of 20% of all units produced on our property should be affordable. So we worked in partnership and collaboration, which we appreciate as well. So it wasn't a mandate or something that BART had required, but it's something that we were leaning towards and moving forward with. And the developer stepped up and worked with us to make that happen. This project was approved prior to our policy being adopted essentially.
Project's not approved yet.
No, for them. Just a quick question about the, because I know the previous, previously it was requested to be that 2.88 million or 3.8 to be a fee waiver. And just curious as to what the rationale is for changing that to a direct funds. Is that due to the grant or?
No. For the purposes of the county, whether it was a fee waiver or something else. The concern was that, didn't want to start down the path of doing fee waivers, holding the line on that. So again, the, as a result of meetings with the city manager, the decision was that it would be a financial contribution in support of it rather than a fee waiver. But we'd have to backfill it anyway, you know, in order to make the improvements happen. There's some SEQA issues of if you waive the money, that some of the improvements need to be done to mitigate impact. So there were some other complications. So it's cleaner this way. It doesn't set a precedent where somebody else comes in and says, well, we want a fee waiver too, and so forth.
And just note again, it's tied to the additional 5% of affordable housing, which as Mr. Rotti's mentioned, is about a $12.5 million total cost. So the city's contribution is, you know, just a fifth of, or about, of that cost. And also just note that the fiscal impact of the project, that's really, if the net's $800,000, it's one year's, you know, it's, so it's, you know, it's clearly the city making an investment to create affordable housing. And I think given the location and the availability, if you're this close to get 15%, why not spend some and get 20? I think that was the rationale for.
Any other discussion now on this second item, the ordinance approving the development agreement?
Oh, I have some questions.
Sure. Commissioner Quigg.
Yeah. I did put my comments in on the affordable housing schedule. And now I'm looking at the $2 million and I'm asking my fellow commissioners here, and I, yes, you did donate $30,000 right away, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is there some way where we can word this, that if for some reason the community center doesn't come together within some kind of timeframe or something, that we can use it for something else of the same nature? Or because it's going to go through a charitable donation, that you can't do that? I don't know. I'm asking. I mean, I, I mean, the community centers.
We need to work out the wording with the developer, but I understand the concern and yes, we could do that.
Yeah. And especially since it's going to be, I mean, I'd like to see 2,505.
Well.
But, which was more in line with our 2.88, that we would be, you know, it would be more, I mean, I'm just going to put my two cents in because I am here and I can say what. The council's going to make up the final decision, but I can say what I think would be better for the city of Millbrae.
Not really a legal point about the number, but I'll just answer further. I think we could probably look at the purpose of the gift and maybe just understanding it's coming from a nonprofit. And so there may be some restriction, but something in the city's overall recreational, you know, somewhere tied to that. So it keeps the same general purpose, I think would be appropriate. We'll work with them on that.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
We're happy to work with your staff on the language, but $2 million is our contribution.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, so I have a question just, I remember the last time we talked about FEMA as part of the, I was just curious where that is right now because I didn't see it anywhere in the packet in terms of, in case the FEMA maps are updated, blah, 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 so.
We've agreed to the condition.
I'm sorry?
We've agreed to the condition.
So, okay, so it's already in the condition.
There are conditions, both in the site development plan and the tentative map. It indicates they have to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Lot to go through, so I just wanted to make sure.
If you're reading closely, there's a notation in the DA that says that that's still under consideration, but it's, now it's been resolved since that was put in, so.
So it was a consideration, but it's now agreed to and it will be in the conditions.
Correct.
Okay. Just to get clarification. Thank you. And in the development agreement in Exhibit D1, it talks a little bit about a rideshare program. Rideshare, forgot what it's called.
Yeah.
Something, something for the downtown, on-demand rideshare, yeah, sorry. Provide a rideshare demand management service at a discount rate to guests, residents and employees to downtown Millbrae. I was just a little more.
It'll be part of our TDM. We'll do that.
Okay. So that will come up somewhere. I just, it would be nice to have a little bit more.
We heard you loud and clear on that.
Great.
It'll be part of the TDM.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rotti, in terms of the hotel itself development, it's my understanding that there's no conference space or anything else. This is strictly a residence-in hotel where you expect a, sort of like an extended state hotel. Is that correct?
It's a Marriott Residence Inn. There, it's what you would typically see. There's little or no conference space. And the, quite frankly, the airport regulations don't allow us to do big conference facilities anyways. It's prohibited by their land use restrictions.
I didn't know that.
Can't do it. Can't do a theater either. You know, any big assemblies you can't do.
In concentric rings coming out from the plan, as you get closer in, you know, kind of no occupancy, no high-density occupancy of any kind. And as you move out, if this was closer in, they wouldn't be permitted to have residential. So as you, as you move away from the airport, the restrictions change, but there's still a limitation on how many persons per acre can be, I think they're in Zone D.
This is a safety zone that speaks to this particular.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm just saying that this part of airport planning, not only for San Francisco but elsewhere, there'd be limitations on high occupancy uses. So he's correct about a theater or a place of assembly, which would accommodate conferences.
Okay. So basically, conference room is not something that can be done within this hotel site?
That's correct.
Okay. So once again, a second recommendation that we're considering for the city council.
I have.
Ordinance approving the development agreement. Do we, Commissioner Quigg has some.
Okay. And the other thing that I think is very important, and I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but, and I heard the lady saying that we have to think about what the need is right now. But how do we go about, or how can we agree to maintain an easement there on South Station Road? Remember you had said for, even without making any changes.
Potential two-way traffic in the future, you mean?
But again, what's discussed in the staff report is that you, through both in the site development plan and then in the tentative map, you would ask that that, or your recommendation would be that the South Station Road easement be increasing width by 10 feet.
When we do the tentative map, then?
It would do it in the site development plan and the tentative map.
Okay.
But it doesn't need to be done in the DA.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Quigg?
I think I'm probably okay. And we're all okay on the shuttles? Because we all had that little issue on enough space for the shuttles.
Yes, we are, we are, yeah, we are recommending, there were four on East Station Road. And those would all, would accommodate up to 40-foot shuttles. There's one on the southbound direction of Rollins Road. And then another location on, in front of the 6A, the affordable housing, would be a sixth shuttle stop.
Close Aviator.
Oh, and then in order to avoid people having to, you know, sometimes people have to wait for the BART train to come in or, you know, whatever. So in order to avoid having people sitting in shuttle stops and tying them up, we're providing layover areas on Aviator so that people should be coming in, loading or unloading and then leaving. And so we're providing places where they can time, they can wait, provide the timing for the connection.
And staff feels comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So in terms of the DA, for me, I'm fine with the DA. I would say with the provision of clarifying, it would be nice to have that timeline a little more clarified. And then also the clarifying, as Commissioner Quigg suggested, about the $2 million and to get the wording to be a little bit more flexible, that that would be nice to do. Personally, I'm fine. I mean, ultimately, it's not up to us in terms of the finances, but I think a net investment of the city of $880,000 for a development and for affordable housing for our community and to support our community, I feel like that should be okay. I mean, again, it's not my call, but that's just my personal feel on it because it is an investment. If we can get more, always better, right, for the city. But I'm just saying, I think that is, you know, actually quite, you know, to ask to pay that much for the sake of being able to help move this development forward and, not for the developers, but for the people who will benefit from the housing, I think is a good thing. So I'd like to see something there at the station ultimately. And again, I think the benefit of having it built out in vibrant, vibrant area, a community, a place where, you know, Millbrae supports our citizens, our housing, our veterans, you know, it's just that kind of a message. I just feel like, you know, it's not such a high price. So again, this is, it's just my personal feeling on it. I think, you know, it's not my call, so, but I'm comfortable recommending the DA as it is. That's my.
I agree. I agree almost completely with you. Absolutely. It's a small investment by the city of Millbrae that we need to make in affordable housing. I have no problems with it.
So just to be clear, I mean, again, just where we are is that there's the recommending, consensus seems to be recommending the DA with modifications in the language about the $2 million to create a little more flexibility of what that money could go for in the recreational area in case things on the community center. And the addition of a timeline that better explains how the project fits together so that the language about the six months and eight months and 12 months is better, easier to follow.
Just a visualization of that. I followed in the language, but like everybody.
I just figured it looked okay. The only other thing is I'd like to see what kind of language you could come up with, with that temporary, if there's something that you could do that would be more beneficial to the city. The one, on number two, on completion, including tenants to occupy units, if there could be something done there.
Is there a consensus on that?
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
So as far as, if I may, as far as the DA on the $2.8 million contribution. So the way I look at this is that we're giving the developer a substantial increase in density. They were able to build a lot more units.
105 more.
Than they would otherwise had they not provided that affordable housing at 20%. So I think as a city, we should do whatever we can to help them secure financing, right? But should not be coming at a cost of a taxpayer, right? I mean, we have 21,000 population in Millbrae, roughly about 8,000 households. So $2.88 million equates to about $360 per household. I think the project that's being presented to us, it's slated to make hundreds of millions of dollars in the future. If I had to tell my constituents that, you know, for each household in Millbrae, which consists of senior citizens and family with young children, tell them that they have to rip out $360 per household to support this project and pay for the construction of this project so that the developers and everybody, all the stakeholders can make hundreds of millions of dollars? I don't know how to justify that. Now, I do believe we should build affordable housing. We have to have it. And it's important for us to have. But as a, but I believe that the cost of such affordable housing should be paid by the developer. And in return, we give them, we give them the density that they're seeking. So I think by virtue of providing the density, I think we are able to give them sufficient benefit. And the city should not be coming out of our own pocket to pay for these affordable housing units.
Here's a justification, if you want one. First of all, TOD number one, you gave a 5.88 fair area ratio and you approved 190 units per acre. We are substantially below that. You are, you can tell your citizens you're providing additional affordable housing for veterans and citizens at very low affordable rates. You can also tell them that that $1 million or that, whatever that is, will be recouped if this project has any sort of success within a year by the fiscal benefit analysis. So I think it's a great, I think it's a great investment that'll get paid back very quickly, if not in a year, in a couple of years. From a standpoint of us making hundreds of millions of dollars, there's no guarantee we're going to make a dime. You know, we think we will, but it's at our risk. There's, we won't know if we're going to make any money till this thing is built, occupied and financed. So that's a risk we take. We'll take it. But to state we're going to make hundreds of millions of dollars is not a true statement. And those are what I believe are your justifications. I think to provide 20 more units for veterans and citizens of Millbrae is a fair, good investment. And if I were elected official, I'd be, I'd be happy to explain that to somebody who was complaining about where I spent my money, as compared to maybe some other places where money went, where they might complain more.
Now, as far as the fiscal impact, I think, you know, we're looking at fiscal impact, a net positive in terms of city revenue bringing in. I think I wanted to stress is that we're looking at a, roughly a million, maybe less, of a positive impact in terms of revenue out of a $25 million annual budget for the city of Millbrae. That represents somewhat less than 4% of increase in terms of revenue for the city. I mean, this piece of property, this is, I guess this would probably be the most important piece of property and most important development for the city of Millbrae. My expectation, and the people that I've spoken to, the expectation on this project is that it should have a sizable impact to the revenue increase for the city of Millbrae. So I think we need to look hard and long about this and say, well, are we bringing enough revenue, opportunity for the city of Millbrae by approving the project as it stands today, given that we have a project that may be less than 4% increase in revenue?
You want me to respond?
No, not necessarily.
I mean, there are many places.
I think we've all had, I guess, chance to express what we were thinking, right, about the DA? And I think, I understand everybody.
I can, I can see what Commissioner Fung is saying. And that's why I feel kind of strongly that the donation to the nonprofit should be increased so that we could justify to our citizens. And I can see that we need to put that money up to get the financing. So I mean, I'm aware of that situation, but I'm thinking it is a tremendous benefit that we're putting up the 2.88. And I feel we should get more than the $2 million for recreation. And because of fact that it is a nonprofit. And because of fact that it is a nonprofit, it's really not going to cost them a whole $2 million, that we should see if we can't balance that. I agree with the affordable, I can live with us paying the 2.88, because it's going to assist in the project, and I think that help by us putting up the 2.88 is worth a lot more than the $2 million. So, I'm over there, and I'm torn with the fact, and I'm willing to go along with it all, but I really think we should negotiate on that a little bit more.
We would, rather than go through what I've already described, and how long this project has been the same, how it's been in the IR and the specific plan, essentially the same thing, essentially the same fiscal impact report, I think we've heard you, we'd asked you the call for the question, and I'll answer any specific questions you have, but...
Well, I, yeah, I think we've gone back...
The fiscal impact report shows we're creating potentially 1,200 jobs, you know, 4% increase in your budget of revenue is huge. I don't know where to go with this, other than to say, thank you very much for your time, and we support your staff's recommendations.
Sorry, I mean, for me, I feel like it's, at this point, we're talking about the dollars, as opposed to, and ultimately, that's not going to be our call anyway. So, we can probably just put in a recommendation to be okay, to forward it to City Council, and then...
It is your responsibility to make a recommendation. So, one of the questions is if, if that's Commissioner Quigg's concern, but it's not shared by the rest of you, then we can move forward, but, you know, again, we have two changes that we've talked about, and the question is, are there other changes? And you have something from one of you that's raising the issue of about the amount of contribution.
Well, I said that up front, at the very beginning of the meeting.
And I think if Commissioner Quigg is okay with just saying, you know, we would be fine with this, but would like to see if there's a way to negotiate out more, I think, I don't think you're saying you won't do it at all, right? So, it's more, we'd like to see more, and I don't think, I think that never hurts to say, if you can negotiate more for the city, that would be great. I don't have an objection with that.
Well, this is going to be a recommendation from the commission as a whole. So, if she has support for that, then other people need to speak up. If not, then, then that won't be part of the recommendation, so.
Take the step and approve with that.
Yeah, so, do you want to include that or not?
So, in other words, you can take the step and approve all the, approve the resolution, and you can add any communications you want to make to the council in terms of, hey, you know, you've already mentioned two. I just want to make sure that's clear, that you have the ability to just, to act on the resolution approving the five different measures, and at the same time, if there are recommendations or statements, or whatever, just as we did with the other development, you can make them. And so, we've got two already, you approve it, but you'd like us to change the, with the $2 million, make sure it's usable for other things. The other one was provided timeline, so it...
So, those are, those are actually amendments to, to that...
Well, the timeline is...
Timeline's not really a change.
Okay, so, given that information, then, on this recommendation, number two, on an ordinance approving the development agreement, we, I guess we can have a consensus on that, but throw in the extra comments of what different members want here. Do we have a consensus on the ordinance approving development agreement?
We're not voting anyway, right? We're just, I mean, we're going to vote on the whole thing together, so we're not voting on this one.
Get approval for a recommendation to the City Council.
But I'm assuming when you make your motion, that what we're talking about is no changes to the, we're moving it with no changes to the sequence, just how far we've gotten, and two changes to the DA, which is softening the language, we're creating flexibility on where the $2 million can be allocated, and a request that, as it goes forward to council, includes a graphic that shows the schedule. Now, are there any other changes to the development agreement? There's been several things that have been under discussion here.
Yeah, I'm hearing that Commissioner Fung feels that the city is losing a lot of money. I'm trying to balance that out by saying, we're doing this to help. I know it's more, but we're doing this, and maybe negotiate a little bit more on the benefits from the $2 million, say, to $2 million.
There's two, or there are three?
So, from my perspective, I think, you know, we are providing significant benefit to the developer by increasing their density. We have given them a huge opportunity to develop on a site that is second to none, and to ask the city to come out more out of our own general fund, and essentially, these money coming from our own Millbrae residents. It's their money.
Well, I mean, this is the way, on the other hand, the way I think about it is, right now, we're trying to deal with building a community center, right? And having a difficult time, and I'm not going to go into all of that, but I'm just saying, that in itself is a challenge. If we have the prospect, this is not something that they're just going to build a place and nobody's going to see it. We're talking about potentially having a vibrant station, hopefully have more jobs, have more, have a place where people will enjoy going to, build up Millbrae's reputation. I mean, I think there are things that we do need to consider, we're putting in some amount of an investment into, and, you know, right now, compared to all the difficulties with the community center, I think $800,000 or $900,000 investment from the city to help build that, move this forward as a vibrant center, and affordable housing, and supporting our veterans, it, I don't feel that, you know, and then on top of that, if we are saying, you know, yes, it's only a 4% revenue of our total budget, but that's every year, and it's better than nothing, which is what we have right now. So, I just would, I mean, so that's, that's just, I don't feel like, I don't know, I'm sorry.
I agree with you, Commissioner Joe. It's a small investment in our community. This project, as it's presented, is going to bring much-needed housing, not just affordable, but market rate. It's going to bring in jobs. We need more jobs in Millbrae. We'll have new opportunities to shop, and to dine, and to be entertained. It's a beautiful project, and it brings humongous benefits. The economic report only talked about the direct benefits, it didn't mention the stuff when these residents go shopping in downtown Millbrae, when the visitors in the hotel go into our town as well. That's all money that's not in the around about $1 million a year. There's more than $1 million coming in a year. And 2.8 million, whether, then offset by $2 million for our community center that we are going to need for sure, it's a beautiful contribution. $2 million is plenty. It's fine. That this got negotiated, it is finally done, is thank you, staff, and thank you, Republic, for working that out.
Tell them to stop the pouting.
I'm sorry?
Again, if, I hear two for, two against, I mean, if we're going to move off, we need to decide if there's support here. The commission needs to decide if there's support for either, you know, increasing the donation or decreasing the support. If there's no support for that, then maybe we need to move on to other ones. If we, can we get to closure on this question for the commission?
Well, no, I'm with the, I'm with the two here.
Which two?
No, I think that the ordinance is definitely a development agreement that we need, that is a very positive thing for the community, and I'm in approval of the format of it.
Okay. So, if I could make, if I could make a suggestion, when we come to the vote, part of what can happen is, even if you vote for the motion overall, you can still ask to have comments put in, which is the comments to the counter, that could allow Commissioners Quigg and Fung to express their concerns about it, so it doesn't get lost. We could go forward with those additional comments. But it sounds like we're at the point where, with, with your comment, that we have a majority of the commission that wants to move forward with only change on the flexibility on the $2 million, and the addition of a graphic. So, we could move forward to the next one?
Okay, and the next one is the resolution approving the site development plan to allow construction of the four new structures. Have any comments on that?
One comment I would have made, which is regarding the VA, the affordable housing, and having that separate, that was something that I came feeling a little bit hesitant about. I mean, not hesitant, but still wondering about, you know, can we integrate it in? And that's why I did want to hear from the other person. So, for me, I feel comfortable with it being separate, the way it is, because of the financing, and because I think it, it does make sense in terms of the support and all of that. So, I'm good with that. The South Station Road, that Commissioner Quigg brought up, I would tend to kind of go along with her on that, in that it would be nice to, even if right now, we keep it one way, to somehow keep it so that we have that option, if in the future, because this, once it's built out, we can't go back, and, you know, we don't want to have people saying 50 years from now, what were those planning commissioners thinking, you know, and there's only one road going into this complex. So, to have some kind of flexibility, I still feel like it would be nice to do. It doesn't have to be forced in there, but I think the, the recommendation by, or staff had put in there some kind of a wording for a condition, possible condition for South Station Road.
Yes, it's, it's in the...
To reserve the right of way, right, in the staff report, so, I'd like to, for me personally, I'd like to preserve that right of way as a potential. I don't know how that would be done. Maybe the sidewalk can, or...
There would be a combination of reductions in sidewalks, as well as a potentially a reduction in the length of the building. But again, given the scale of the building, we're talking about increasing the easement by 10 feet.
So, because the bike, right now, the bike, so there are six, two 6-feet bike paths, and then a nine-foot sidewalk?
Correct. And a one-way traveling.
I'm sorry, I'm not a biker, so a 6-feet, is, could it be less than a 6-feet? Is 6-feet wide of a bike path, is that what it needs to be? Yes, okay.
Yes.
I'm saying yes, and I apologize, I'm not, I should become a biker. But, okay, so 6-feet is kind of where we need it to be, and so that can't be changed too much. And then the sidewalk is a nine-foot sidewalk.
The sidewalk is a variable width on both sides. So, again, what, if you say that, that you want that easement, we would work with them, and it would come back to you in design review in terms of a combination of, we still need to meet the minimum sidewalk width requirements, but between that and some changes perhaps in, in the building, to make up 10-feet increase in the, in the easement.
Okay, personally, I'd like that.
Can I just ask one more question about that? You said if we ever wanted to make it a two-way road, we'd have to knock down the overpass? Is that what it sounded like?
No.
What, what, what had to get, not, what had to, what was in the way if they wanted to make it a two-way road? There was something structural that was like, what?
That was.
No, but, but we're going to build a two-way, to preserve the easement, to make a two-way road someday in the future.
We need to confirm actually the vertical height that is available, so there's, assuming that vertical heights do not meet Caltrans standards, there could be height restriction put on that over crossing, as far as what kind of vehicles can go under. But that's something that we do need to investigate and get back to. I don't have the answer as far as what exactly the vertical heights are in that location.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so you're saying what, what the height of the vehicle can actually go under the overpass?
Correct. I mean, you see a lot of underpasses where the vertical heights are specified, as far as what type of vehicles are allowed to go under the bridge. So, that's something that we need to investigate and get back to you.
But if it's a one-way, then there must be something okay, no?
I guess currently vehicles are going under, so I'm not, and I don't know...
Right, there are vehicles going under right now.
As I said, we need, we do need to essentially investigate and then get back to you, but at this point, you know, the right of way can be preserved for a two-way street, but...
So, South Station Road currently is already a roadway, although it is a single directional traffic, right?
Currently, you can, you can basically go under that roadway and collect to Adrian, and then get on Rollins and get back on Millbrae Ave.
Right, so it's apparently, it's currently being used.
Correct.
Yes, must be, well, so there must be some capacity for vehicles to go through, and then, I suppose, if you were just be able to widen it, then you can potentially accommodate two-way traffic.
True. Even the profile of the road can be dropped to, assuming there are vertical height issues, without necessarily removing the bridge.
Yeah, although there might be height limit to the vehicle that drive through that future two-way traffic.
Correct.
But, you know, I would imagine passenger car could easily drive through it.
Sorry, just to clear, so this is a place where the overpass is starting to come down, right? So, the clearance on one side is not the same as the clearance on the other.
Correct.
That's why it's a problem. So, we could, you may have perfectly fine clearance for one lane of traffic, but the second one is, and you could...
Well, I would just like it, investigate it, and if we can possibly maintain it for future use, that would be wonderful.
I think it's actually important for us to have that option for the future growth. The amount of human traffic, as well as vehicular traffic that go through the site in the future after the site's being developed, the best we could do is guess at the moment, but I suppose that it will increase no matter what. So, with only single row on Rollins going in and out of that place, and expecting shuttle bus and everything else that goes with it, I think having a secondary ingress and egress is extremely important.
So, we're on the third resolution for approval of the site development plan to allow the construction of four new structures. Do we have approval on that?
And again, the requested changes from the developer, this table that I, I just, if you would make sure that that was included in your, your discussion, or thinking that you're incorporating these.
What you gave us is acceptable.
Yes.
Yes.
Just the, there's four that we're recommending not go forward.
Who knows?
Okay, so these...
So, there's two items on it.
Four.
Yeah. On here, but then the other one is...
No, there's four in total.
Right, right.
Okay, so it sounds like you're supporting these going in, and it's, again, I'm just looking, it sounded like there was a majority that want to add the condition requiring the additional width to the, to the South Station right of way.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is that...
Okay, so, where are we on this?
I'm neutral.
I think we should, I think we should accommodate future growth, and therefore, I believe...
Yeah, as a, as a recommendation, if there's a way to feasibly accommodate for that, I think that would be something I would like to...
Well, I would think that's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, I mean, we're, we're only recommending, so I'm saying, as a recommendation, I would want to put that in there, to add that in there.
On this side, too, that we accommodate future, yeah.
Okay, are there any other changes to the, we're also, do we need to do an extension? It's almost 10:30?
10:30, isn't it? No, it's only 10:30.
Oh, no, we're still...
We're almost done, though, aren't we?
Another 35 minutes before we're...
Oh, you don't, you have to do 11 o'clock? Okay, all right. So, are there any other changes to the site development plan resolution?
No, but can I make one more comment to tag in on something that Commissioner Joe said about the separate nature of the affordable housing? I understand, you know, Chris's concerns that, you know, segregating people might be a negative, but I just want to remind us all that it's going to be our responsibility to make sure that that unit is not segregated in any way, that as a community, as BART, as whoever is managing the property, that that building is a whole part of the community, and we make sure that that continues moving forward, that it doesn't ever become a separate little thing that everybody ignores. We have to do it as a community.
It's not that far.
I know, but people are worried that it's going to be...
I think it'll be okay.
Okay, just want to say.
So, with that, we approve that, I guess, and...
Well, it looks like we have consensus for a motion on that. If there are any other changes, then I guess it's the, cap the conditional use permit next?
I'm sorry?
The conditional use permit is the next resolution?
Oh, conditional use permit is the next one, allowing the commercial lodging in Building 6B. Do we have any comments on that one?
No problem with that.
Looks like approval, huh?
Just personally, I do, you know, hope that the hotel would be a more upscale hotel, rather than just a residence inn. I think that'll help increase... rather than just a Residence Inn. I think that'll help increase the TOT potentially. I certainly would hope that would be the case.
It would be nice, but I don't think it's going to happen.
Well, we can make our recommendation, it's up to the council to make that decision. But, you know, I think I felt that, you know, with the proximity, the BART and the transit nature of it, I think there's an opportunity for us to do something better than that.
Is it part of our, I don't think we have a say in here about what is in, or is it? I just, for clarification, I'm, do, is it...
It's a Residence Inn.
Right, so, I mean, but like every, what business goes in or not, or what hotel, what is our, I just want clarification, I'm not...
We are being asked to approve a conditional use permit for a hotel.
Right, so there's a use permit to a hotel. There's language in the development...
I'm just getting clarification, yes.
Let him finish.
The fourth action is to approve the use permit to permit a hotel in that location. That does not have anything about the quality or the brand of the hotel. There is language in the development agreement relative to the quality of the hotel and it does permit this, this, this quality. So, that's, that's where that language, I can locate it for you in a second if you want to see it.
So, if any, if anyone wants to change or has, wants to have a say in that, that would be in the DA, that would be included in the DA recommendation? Is that...
Yep.
So, I guess we have unanimous approval on that one then.
Okay.
Okay. And the final one, number five, is resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map to allow a merger and subdivision of the existing parcels, totaling approximately 11 acres and six parcels, including four development parcels, one for, and a parcel for BART, station and parking garage, and another parcel for surface parking lot in the northeast corner of the site. Okay, any comments on that or indication that you approve it?
We're going to recommend it.
Sounds like a recommendation over here.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think Commissioner Feng brought up a question about the hotel and I think if he, if other commissioners have an issue with that, I mean, maybe, I mean, that would be in the DA. I just wanted the clarification.
No problem with the...
Okay, so...
And we approve lodging. You don't know what's going to happen in the next five or 10 years if...
Well, it's in the development agreement, so that's why, that's where we address it.
Not to the brand, just to the, the stars perhaps of the hotel chain, but...
To the quality, the level of quality.
It's not a budget hotel. I mean, this isn't, I don't want to name names, but it's not, it's not a motel, first of all. It's a hotel.
Maybe I can just...
It's going to be televised, Commissioner Davis, this, the budget hotel. I'm sorry, do we have the wording? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we do. It's in, it's on page G3. It's Exhibit G to the development agreement at the very bottom of page G3. Says, "The structure of the hotel and its uses and quality levels are of great importance to the city and shall be consistent with the specific plan. Parties recognize that hotel brands may change over time. Developer contemplates the hotel to be operated initially as a Marriott Residence Inn or similar quality select service hotel. For the purpose of this development agreement, a select service hotel shall mean hotel which is a hybrid between a limited service and a full-service hotel with no stays beyond 30 days, offering fundamental characteristics of limited service properties together with a selection of services and amenity characteristics of full-service hotel properties, including in-room amenities approximating those found in full-service hotels, an absence of expansive catering services or expansive meeting space and two or fewer restaurants." And then it gives a list so we can be equal to everybody. Aloft, Holiday Inn Select, Four Points by Sheridan, Courtyard by Marriott, Residence Inn by Marriott, Hilton Garden, Hotel Indigo, DoubleTree Club, Hyatt Place, Ramada, Wyndham, Garden Inn, Clarion and Cambria Suites. So, that's the requirement. "Developers shall work with a hospitality consultant to provide additional information. City manager for the site and location, given the applicable market conditions, which such analysis developers shall make available to the community development department, staff and city council for review and comment." So, that's how we address the...
Okay, I think then we have, with certain comments and exceptions, we've got approval of the five, well, one ordinance and four resolutions under the recommendation here. So, we need a motion regarding this recommendation to the City Council.
You're, you're making, there's a single action. You're adopting Attachment A, which is the draft Planning Commission resolution, and it will have five exhibits to it, which we've now walked through. So, you'd be recommending, or you'd be making a motion to pass that resolution of the Planning Commission with the specific changes that we've talked about tonight.
All right. So, somebody want to put...
I'll make a motion to, to recommend to the City Council that they adopt the four resolutions and the ordinance. So, recommend to approve the attached resolution, recommending to the City Council that they, to adopt the four resolutions and ordinance with the suggested changes that we've mentioned.
Okay, and just before there's a second, could I just make, I just want to walk through to make sure that I understand. But my understanding is that on the development, there's only two areas of change. Or, once the development agreement to revise the language to create more flexibility for where the $2 million donation can be spent and to add a graphic representation of the schedule. And then on the site development plan, add the language about widening South Station Road to add an additional 10 feet to that right of way. And then the changes that were in the developer's request that staff identified as acceptable.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Oh, there you go. And we have your votes, please. Okay, we have approval by a vote of four with Commissioner Feng voting against. Okay.
Thank you very much for your, your consideration, your time. We look forward to working with your staff on design review and moving forward to City Council. Thank you very much.
John, this is the end of the broadcast?
And we're not done.
So, just need to say it into the mic.
That'll be the end of the broadcast portion of the meeting. Okay. Okay, we have...
No, no, they're making a recommendation on all four. They don't have action. Oh, yeah, no. That's correct. It's all going up to the council.